Are you quite ready?
Yes.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to begin. This planning mission is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and is posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. So would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Present.
Vice Chair Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Ellsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Goins.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
And Commissioner Flegus.
Present.
Thank you.
We do have a quorum, and I would like to officially welcome Planning Commissioner Gus Flegus to the Planning Commission. This is his first meeting, and he's going to jump right in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available to answer. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so that we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the June 25, 2009 Planning Commission meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes. Oh, I see Commissioner.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes.
And I'm going to abstain since I wasn't at that meeting.
Thank you.
And same with me. I wasn't at the previous meeting, so I'll be abstaining.
Motion carries. Let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, item number 10, the applicant has requested that this item be obeyed to the August 27 Planning Commission meeting. Items 14, 15, and 16, the applicant has requested that these items be obeyed to the August 27 Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant to work on site issues. Item 17, 18, and 19, the applicant has requested that these items be obeyed to the August 27 Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant to work on site issues.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, we have one gentleman. Come on.
Do you receive the items related to?
Certainly. It's items 10, 14, 15, and 16, 17, 18, and 19. Sir?
My name is Stephen Grogan, 2121 Silver Avenue. I'm president of Scotch 80's Homeowner Association. I just want to speak on 17, 18, and 19 very quickly. We agree with the abeyance. We look forward to the meeting on 27th. We feel like this issues, these three issues were rushed into the neighborhood very quickly, and we look forward to presenting ourselves before the commission at that time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on any of the items? Hearing none. Vice Chair Truesdale?
Mr. Chairman, I move that these items be brought forward and approved as requested by staff.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Motion carries. I have had a request to move an item up, item number 27, a conflict with another public meeting a little later, and I'd like to have it heard as item number, right after item number eight. So let's go ahead with the public hearing. Number 27, it would be heard right after number 28. We have items number six and related items seven and eight. Item number six is a general plan amendment 34610. The applicant is Flow TV Inc., owner, United States of America, from DR Desert Rural Density Residential to PF Public Facilities on the north side of Delray Avenue, approximately 900 feet west of Monte Cristo Way. Item number seven is zoning 34611 from residential estates to civic. And item number eight would be SDR 34612 for an existing 321-foot radio, TV, or microwave communication tower and the installation of one antenna at a height of 300 feet on the existing tower. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the site is currently a use for a communication towers and is a non-conforming use of land as the use is not permitted under the current code in the Desert Rural Residential Zoning District. Approval of the associated general plan amendment to PF Public Facilities and rezoning to CV District will make the current use conforming and allow for the installation of the 25-foot antenna on the existing 321-foot tower. Staff is recommending approval. Should these applications be denied, the half-street improvements and the other requirements and conditions would not be enforced at this time.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on these items? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record, and write it down, please, so that the clerks would be able to get the spelling and all. Thank you so much. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Janice Manley. I represent Flow TV. They are a subsidiary of Qualcomm and operate a nationwide multimedia network for wireless Through their award-winning Flow TV Entertainment Service, consumers can watch live, simulcast, and time-shifted full-length television programming on their mobile phones and devices wherever they go. Flow TV's RF engineers have identified the tower located north of Delray Avenue as the best candidate for service to their customers in the West Las Vegas area. They have entered into an agreement with Birkin Broadcasting to lease space on the tower to place their antenna, as well as space inside the building to house equipment. There will also be two KU-band satellite dishes, an emergency backup generator, and a heat exchanger located outside the building, inside the fenced-in area. As part of the process for installation, I made application with the city of Las Vegas to obtain the necessary approvals and permits. After reviewing the proposed changes, the city determined that the process would consist of a zoning change from DR to PF in order for the tower to be brought into compliance with the city's ordinance. In addition to the zone change, a new site development review and general plan amendment were also deemed necessary. These applications have been filed with the city, and all associated materials, fees, and due diligence has been performed. It is my request that the Planning Commission recommend approval of these applications and that Flow TV is allowed to proceed with their installation at this location.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on these items? Please come up and let your wishes be known. Sir?
Hi, my name is Larry Ansbach, and I'm president of the Neighborhood Alliance Association, which roughly serves the area between Rainbow to Durango and Charleston to Sahara. Having said all that, the goal of our neighborhood really is to eliminate the existing antennas lease, which is up in 2011, and it's renewable till 2024. Having said all that, though, as I said, the majority of our residents are against this project. However, the person in charge of this project at the BLM, her name is Jane Miller, and she says that this project can be approved without any zoning change whatsoever. So our feeling is, bad things happen when zoning gets changed. So this project can go forward, according to Jane Miller, who's in charge of this, at the BLM, so, without any zoning change whatsoever. So our feeling is, we really do not want any zoning change. Every time there's a zoning change, the neighborhood's been hurt. From the Social Security Building, there's an annex to that, and that was zoned again to allow a doctor's office years ago. The zoning was changed to allow one-car dealership west of Rainbow on Sahara. There's five of them now. So our feeling is, if you want this project to go forward, it can clearly go forward without any zoning change whatsoever.
Excuse me, through the commissioner, what was your name again?
Larry Ansbach, Commissioner.
Thank you, there.
I'll sign in here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North High, 15th Street. Can somebody tell me how the federal government has a deed to this land? Hasn't it ever been put on the county rolls?
No, it's BLM property.
Forever?
Well...
Hi, my name is Gerina Goretto, and I live right across from the property. Our entrance gates, our gates to our community face the BLM property, and we are truly opposed to any zoning changes. We've had lots of crime in the area. Anything that happens affects our neighborhood. We've had people on that property urinating. We can't get anybody to clean up. The dumping, I go out there, I was out there last Friday and cleaned up a refrigerator. The planning, the neighborhood cleanup asked me to go out there and take the doors off of it. I mean, anything that happens in that neighborhood, as Larry said, we pay for it. We've asked not to have the annex on the Social Security Building. It was supposed to service the customers of the Social Security Building. The Planning Commission and the City Council allowed the annex. Nobody would rent it, so they changed it to the doctor's office, which has brought in increased traffic into that area that we predicted would happen. So any, I just don't see why we need, or anybody needs, instant TV to their cellphone for three years. The owners of the antenna will make $90,000 over that three years, and you're going to put our neighborhood at risk. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on these matters? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Ma'am, come on, please.
I don't run as fast as I used to, I guess. I want you to clerk on behalf of Charleston Neighborhood Preservation. We do have a board member in that area, and in that specific area, and we, however, agree with the residents that are adjacent to this and agree with what they have requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion. Let me ask the first question. I know that the BLM may have its own feelings, but what are the consequences of not rezoning this property? And...
If I may?
Yes, please.
The BLM, of course, has no standing in local land use issues, general plan, zoning, or anything else. The issue is that the addition to the tower requires a building permit. At the time a building permit is issued, it must meet zoning. It does not meet zoning, and therefore, a building permit for this addition to the tower cannot be granted without the other actions with regard to the general plan and the zoning. And we have been working with the city attorney's office to confirm all of that prior to your hearing this evening.
Chairman, we concur with the planning director's opinion.
I think that the residents in the area have proper reason to be concerned. They have been shorted every time we do a zone change. The tower currently exists. I know we inherited it from the county as a result of an annexation with the Tower M Place, but I also know the history of that parcel. I used to live just a few blocks from the place, and it used to be the site for everything from midnight parties to dumping, to motorcycle riding, to you name it, it used to happen in that parcel. The city, on numerous occasions, have had to go out and clean it up, you know. The residents themselves have taken the responsibility to do some site cleanup, like in the case of the refrigerator that was missed, and that's just asking a bit much for people that are living in a neighborhood like this that are, have been negatively impacted by this big, essentially vacant spot being there. I went out and looked at the site, again, just to remind myself, and there's the control building, that's a big block building, that has a 10-foot chain-link fence around it with three strands of barbed wire above it, protecting it from the public, but yet, inside that compound is graffiti and other markings that are inappropriate. Between the tower, which has a 5-foot chain-link fence and two strands of barbed wire around it, there's a danger-high voltage sign. The fact that the taggers could get inside the 10-foot chain-link fence leads me to believe that they could also get inside the 5-foot chain-link fence. I also noticed that the tower and the block wall site are connected with two large wire pieces of material that are enclosed in some kind of old-fashioned, quite frankly, conduit material, and it's not properly suspended. It's just laying on top of four-foot fence posts that are in pretty sad shape. Some of the wiring even touches the ground, and the site is somewhat enclosed by three-strand barbed wire around the perimeter. It's just inadequate to keep anybody out. And I am extremely hesitant to support giving them zone changes under the condition, understanding the staff's position that it's got to have the zone changed in order to get the other items. You know, some of the conditions that are included in the site development review are very attractive and at least gives the neighborhood something. You know, some of those things include a half-street, a sidewalk, abatement of the current graffiti that exists around the parcel, site cleanup, and a commitment for ongoing maintenance. Those are all very attractive, and they're certainly not happening now. And so the trade-off, in order to get those improvements that are part of the condition for the site development review, requires us to give the zone change, and I want the one without giving the other. How can I get there?
If I may, there are code enforcement issues with regard to the maintenance of the site. That certainly these hearings bring that forward, and the Planning Commission's concerns will move forward, but those are property maintenance. In other words, the graffiti and the rubbish and things of that nature. However, the public improvements can only be required with the approval of a discretionary permit, which is what the Site Development Plan Review application is.
I understand that. Thank you. However, now who would the property maintenance issues go against? Would it be the BLM? Would it be the master leaseholder? Or would it be this, you know, Flow TV, which seems to be the last person in line as getting the primary responsibility? That sounds like that's the way it's...
The primary responsibility is the property owner, and whatever private arrangements they make is our private arrangements.
And the BLM obviously just jumps to every time the city asks them to? That was a physical...
You know the answer to that.
Yes, I do.
Commissioner?
Please, jump in. I'm talking too much.
You're not talking too much...
Mr. Quinn?
Yeah, because I agree with you completely. I have watched this neighborhood, and Mr. Larry, I've been graciously enough invited to his home before the Social Security was built, and I would stand here firm today to say that it didn't belong there then, and it doesn't belong there now. And I'm not going to sit here and watch something else be dumped in your backyard that all of you worked so hard for. I don't know anything about the BLM, or how it's paid for, who's going to maintain it. All I know is you do not need one more problem to jeopardize your property value, and I will not support it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Question for the applicant. Does the, Mr. Ansbach, raised the issue about a lease that was expiring in some near term.
Yes.
What kind of lease term do you expect on this site with your use?
The underlying lease between Birkin Broadcasting and BLM does expire in 2011. That is because Birkin, it was kind of, they bought out Continental Radio, which is who had the lease before, and the end of that lease is 2011. So in order for Birkin to have the lease put in their name, and in 2011 is when they can do that. When the original lease that they bought out expires, then they can have a new lease written with them until 2024, which is when the grant, the original grant for the site as a communications facility ends.
And what's your lease look like?
Our lease right now with Birkin is for three years, with the understanding that once they sign a new lease with BLM, that we will also sign a new lease with Birkin for the same period of time.
Okay. Now, this is obviously wonderful, at least perceived wonderful technology, but do we need to have people driving in their cars, watching TV? I mean, I can't get across town without getting run into the curb by people, and I'm as guilty as probably everybody else, but it, this is insanity. I mean...
Well, we're not developing it so that people can watch TV in their car. It's basically...
Well, you said on their cellphones, I mean...
On their cellphones, but there's a park right across the street.
Okay, so...
So they're sitting out at the park, watching, you know, their kid play soccer, or, you know, watching their kids play. They can also be checking news or whatever else on their phone if they want to. I mean, it's...
And then watch somebody, and then look up, and the kid's gone with somebody?
I'm...
Like it happens so often?
Yeah.
They should be interacting with the kid and put the instrument down and play real mommy and real daddy and interact.
I totally agree. I'm just saying that it's there if someone wants it. It's not mandatory service. It's, obviously, it's a luxury that if you want it, you have it. If you don't want it, you don't buy it.
Just like...
As for the conditions for the approval, though, the Birkin, the actual leaseholder, the master leaseholder, does have, they are responsible for the cleanup, and Birkin has promised that they will be over there and have the place cleaned up by no later than August 7th. They, and they are under, they have been told by BLM that it is their responsibility to keep it cleaned, and so they have accepted that. They obviously thought that it was BLM's responsibility and BLM...
No, Birkin's sharper than that. All these antenna companies know what their obligations are, and they have hundreds and hundreds of antennas around the country, most of them, and they just basically wait until the municipality comes up and says, "You have some leverage at this point." Otherwise, they wouldn't be doing a thing on this site.
Well, I know that they have organized a cleanup before, and that was when the other general manager was there. The one that's there now just took over a few months ago, and she evidently didn't know that it was her responsibility to do that, or that's what she told me when I asked her. And she, I talked to her just this week, and she said that she did have it scheduled it would be done by August 7th.
I just, you know, this antenna's been there as kind of an eyesore. I mean, in the arguments given to increase the intensity on this property and continue to have it sit in the middle of this residential neighborhood, there's got to be better places than this. And I, in this case, I agree with the neighbors. A change may not solve the problems, but it definitely will change what their expectations of not enjoying their neighborhood are. I mean, the people have had the antenna here. This is not a walkable area. It's not, it's just been an eyesore for these years. So I can't support increasing this here. There's graffiti on the walls. There's just the whole lack of maintenance out here, and there's no reason to increase that burden on these neighbors.
Any further discussion? If not, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to GPA 34610, make a motion for denial.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Motion carries. Item number seven.
With regards to item number seven, motions for denial.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote.
And with regards to item number eight, motions for denial.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know that we have a new commissioner here. I was wondering, I saw his first vote was a nay. Was your intention for yes on all those, or...
No, the first vote on mine was a mistake on the button. Chalk it up to newness.
It happens to all of us.
Not just newness, it's just this...
The matter goes forward to the City Council with the Planning Commission recommendation for denial at their meeting of August 19th.
Thank you. Now move to item number 27, if we would. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on item number 27? I see one coming forward. Okay, just a second. Okay. In regards to item number 27, Site Development Review 34778. The applicant is Glen Court Properties Inc. The owner is Virgin Territory LLC. It's for a 3,200-square-foot restaurant with a drive-thru where 2,800-square-foot restaurant with a drive-thru was previously approved on the north side of Craig Road, approximately 765 feet west of Jones Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request to add 356 square feet to a previously approved 2,800-square-foot restaurant with drive-thru. Landscaping, parking, and circulation will remain as previously approved. A waiver of the development standards is also requested to allow facade adjacent to the public right of way to have 52% architectural embellishments where 60% is required. The proposed expansion of the use and the requested waiver will have a minimal impact on the existing site and the surrounding uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the subject application. Please note that there are additional letters of support for this item.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance, or now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Greg Borghel, 300 South 4th Street, here for the applicant. We certainly appreciate the staff's favorable recommendation. Would ask you to follow it. Would point out that this is a fairly minor addition in terms of square footage to a prior approval for a Burger King restaurant. The addition here is something like 300 and some odd square feet, bigger than it was when it was originally approved. We were hoping that you would see this as a minor change that would not have to go on to City Council. Although we notice the agenda suggests that it might have to, we would hope that it did not. Other than that, we would answer your questions.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Thank you. I, seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed and ask the applicant, do you agree to all conditions as presented in the document?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing's been closed. Turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Borghel, sir, with the increase in square footage, did the parking increase, and did you add a disabled parking spot to that?
The parking requirement increased slightly, but we are, by my calculations, overparked by 100%. We have twice the required parking.
So you're disabled?
And we are satisfying the ADA requirements on accessible parking.
For both van and car? A van spot as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
No other comments? I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Motion carries.
That's final action, the absence and appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much, and thank you for moving this forward so I can get to that other commission down the street.
One that will go unnamed?
This one's a lot better.
Okay.
For far.
Item number nine is RQR 34323. The applicant, owner's Marshall Family Limited Partnership. It's for a 40-foot-high, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 2330 Industrial Road. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this required review was held from the 625 Planning Commission meeting in order to give the applicant time to clean and maintain the subject site. As confirmed by a field check conducted by staff on July 22nd, the site has been cleaned and the sign has been repainted. Staff's recommendation remains denial due to the lack of continued maintenance of the site as was previously conditioned.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open and ask anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, to please approach the microphone and give their name for the record, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Tom Amick, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Todd Marshall. As staff notes, we were here a month ago. We apologize for not having the sign cleaned at that time. It has been taken care of, power washed, cleaned, and repainted. The only thing that is not installed on the sign yet are the bird deterrent devices, and there's a condition that requires us to have those up within 30 days. We think we'll have them up much sooner than that, and I have some before-and-after pictures if you'd like to see them. I see that staff has the same pictures that I do, but I'd be happy to show them to you if you'd like to see them. That's all I have.
Okay, proceed. Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Please approach the microphone.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. How do we make sure that this remains clean? Thank you.
Kill the pigeons, thank you. Is this the before-after picture that I'm looking at? Is this the before-after picture that I'm looking at?
That is the after picture.
And the discoloration on the asphalt is?
I would assume that's due to staining from the bird droppings.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing's closed. Turn over the Planning Commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no discussion, I asked that this be held. I think we were unanimous in that belief to give the applicant an opportunity to try to mitigate and correct the problems from before. I remain of the belief that this is the, if there's an appropriate place for a billboard, this would likely be it. And I would hope that your client will continue to maintain the sign. Ms. Wheeler, what point does this come for review again?
If I may, Chairman?
Please.
By ordinance, the minimum review, I'm sorry, yes, is three years. It can only come back in three years.
So that, one of the conditions of approval is that it'll be re-reviewed in three years?
Number two.
Okay. Then my motion would be for approval with all conditions as listed by the staff.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries.
Goes forward to Council, August 19th.
Thank you.
Now move to item number 11 and companion items 12 and 13. Item number 11 is a General Plan Amendment 34706. The applicant is NV Energy. The owner is USA and Nevada Power Company. It's from Planned Community Development, two public facilities on the south side of Moccasin Road alignment, 660 feet west of Larry McBride Street alignment. Item number 12 is zoning, 34709. It's from undeveloped Planned Community Development, General Plan Designation 2 Civic. Item number 13 is Site Development Review 34710 for expansion of existing electric utility substation. Staff report, please.
The subject site contains an existing electrical utility substation on 25 acres. The applicant is expanding the existing electrical substation and will add five acres to the subject site. The proposed public facility land use designation and rezoning to CVA is compatible with the surrounding land use designation and is appropriate category for the electrical utility substation used as proposed, and staff is recommending approval of all the applications. Please note, staff does have additional conditions here, and I will read them into the record. A waiver of Title 1912 landscape and buffer standards is hereby approved to allow a 10-foot buffer along north, south, and east perimeter where 15 feet is the minimum required. An additional condition, a waiver of Title 1912 landscape and buffer standards is hereby approved to allow five-gallon Joshua trees where 24-inch box trees are required. And a third planning condition, any walls exceeding eight feet in height will require variance. Public Works has an additional condition change also.
This is Bart Anderson, Public Works. On item number 13, the SDR, condition number 12, I would like to delete a portion of that condition. The condition refers to entry gates that need to be set back a minimum of 18 feet or it provides for an alternative that requires the gates to remain open during business hours. That doesn't really make sense in this installation, and I acknowledge that, so I'd like to remove the alternative language and just keep the rest of the condition. So I would remove from the semicolon, alternatively, the gates shall remain open during regular hours of operation, period. We'll just delete that portion.
And Mr. Chairman, my condition additions were to item 13, SDR 34710.
Thank you. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Declare the public hearing open. Representing NV Energy, we have...
Good evening. Edgar Patino with NV Energy, 6226 West Sahara, and also Michelle Balt with NV Energy, 6226 West Sahara.
Good evening.
I've written to the record the changes with Title 19 and also the changes with the heat. So I think the last name should be the blue wall.
Yeah, which that should be site design review. The general plan amendment is being done in order to make and to conform an E, our substation that was just recently annexed into the city. And the five acres we're expanding onto is BLM land. And because it's a smaller portion, well, it's five acres of a larger BLM land, is what we had to do to the general plan amendment, along with the zone change, which I guess is next on the agenda. And we confirm with all of staff's recommendations.
Has amended the new ones on 13?
Yes.
Thank you. The public hearing is open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Now, as you're approaching, approach the microphone and state your case. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the Planning Commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
This is a, excuse me, Commissioner?
Mr. Quinn?
This is just a broad question. I was on the phone this afternoon or this morning with Scott Rutledge, who's a partner for Green Nevada and just a great guy. And I'm curious, just from my own knowledge, as to when we're building so far, expanding these kind of places so far out of the city, why we can't start the solar panels out that way versus these old towers that are like in the center of our town? And it's just a simple question I was wondering, because I don't understand why we're not starting with the new technology versus going with the old stuff. And I think my colleague Byron could explain what I'm trying to say. Byron?
That's a good tactic. No pressure there, right? Well, no, he knows what I'm...
I'll give it a try.
Thank you, Byron.
It's called... She says, "Why not a solar panel station as opposed to a, your traditional block-wall-type
Well, actually, this is the layout for the expansion. And as you can see, we have our existing facilities here. And then this is the five acres that we're expanding onto, which the aerial fixture actually gives you a better idea of that. And we are working on solar energy. We're out in the northwest area, Apex area. This 500, this five acres that we're expanding onto will allow us to work in, to be building a 500 kilovolt, or 500,000 voltage yard that will, hopefully, when we get the solar expansions done or produced, we'll be able to utilize a portion of this to bring the energy into the valley. Unfortunately, right now, we're kind of landlocked with bringing new lines into the valley, even though we can produce the Benita facilities outside the area. But to the north, we have the Las Vegas Pies. To the west, to bring transmission lines, we have the Red Rock Conservation Area. And then to the east, we have the, or not, to the east, we have the Conservation Transfer Area. So we're kind of working on those issues, but we will be bringing solar into the valley via new transmission lines, but the solar will be out as we're planning further out west. If that helps answer anything.
Who does this station provide power to?
This particular substation? This provides valley, or power to all of the Las Vegas Valley. It's mainly to the west, and this new 500 KV switchyard will help reinforce the substations that are on the west side of the valley.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Doesn't come with a rate hike, does it?
Please, there you are.
She didn't answer that. I pay the same power bills you do. I'm sorry.
I want to...
Mr. Ellsworth?
I want to compliment NV Energy as I watch these updates you make, or have been making over the last several years. It seems to always get better. It's more aesthetically pleasing, and I compliment you on that. And I think you're doing a good job, and I want to compliment those who are in charge of that effort. Please do keep making it look better. We get tired of seeing the chain link fences. We want to see the nice brick walls. We want to see it enhance the neighborhoods and not drag them down. So keep up the good work, and I support you in your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Yes. And Edgar would like to add to the solar question.
Commissioners, if I just, if I may add just a little bit to the solar question. From a corporate perspective, solar is definitely, definitely part of our strategy. In fact, we're going to attend a meeting here in a little bit with Mr. Scott Rutledge, and so we're very much on the same page when it comes to those efforts. But let me just separate two issues for a moment. This is more about infrastructure and strengthening the infrastructure of the company and being able to provide reliable service to the western portion of the city. And what you're addressing, co-locating solar facilities where applicable, where it makes sense, we're also very interested in doing that and looking at ways to do that. And one example might be doing this type of a thing at some of our generating plants. And so where we own the land and it's ours, and there's extra space off the side where we might be able to do that, we're definitely looking into that. And part of that process is really to meet what really is state law right now, where we have to have a certain amount of renewables to provide to our customers by a set date. I believe it's 25% renewables by the year 2025, and we're actively working to meet that via some of these efforts that you're talking about. So what you make, what you're saying makes perfect sense.
Thank you.
I might just say that they're slightly separate efforts.
I just wanted to start learning about it, because I think it's coming. I think it's here, and I think every chance we get, we should put it in place. And when I see that name, you know, Kyle Canyon out there, it sounds far, but when your colleague explains everything around it and how difficult it'd be, it makes perfect sense to me why you can't. You'll certainly see my support, but I want to learn more about Green, and thank you for your answer, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I think we're ready for a motion, Dana.
I'll move for approval of item number 11 with all of staff's conditions and recommendations.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries. 12?
And likewise with number 12, move for approval.
Motion's made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries. And 13.
And likewise, move for approval of item number 13.
And that is with the amended conditions by Planning and Public Works?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion's made. Please cast your votes.
I'm sorry, did the Public Works condition add the fact that we all have to keep the gates open 24/7?
And the conditions as read in by Planning also, I think.
But yes, Public Works did remove that language.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And also, by the way, I would like to give a heartfelt thank you to Flynn that helped us, Flynn and Margot, with the annexation before we even started all of this, and to Bart Anderson and Peter Jackson, Steve Gabecki, Ben Sticke, who worked very hard on the annexation and this expansion.
They haven't voted yet.
I'm sorry?
They haven't voted yet on the last one.
Well, I still want to make for the record our appreciation of all of staff's support. Staff has really worked hard along with us on a lot of these things.
I did vote.
And Doug Rankin. And we really appreciate your staff's support and help.
Thank you for the compliments from staff. The motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
All goes forward to Council on August 19th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to item number 20, variance 34662. The applicant owner is Rebecca Carr, to allow an 11-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required and a four-foot encroachment for an architectural feature, roof eve, where two feet is the maximum permitted for an existing carport at 521 Barnes Avenue. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this variance request is for an existing carport that was built without permits and the front yard setback area. The applicant has since applied for building permit, which was denied by the Planning Development Department pending the results of this variance request. The structure of the carport is set back only 11 feet from the front property line where 20 feet is required, with the eve extending an additional four feet where a two-foot extension is permitted. A denial of this request will require the structure to be removed or redesigned to meet the minimum requirements of Title 19. Staff is recommending denial as the applicant has provided no evidence of unique or extraordinary circumstances and has created self-imposed hardship by constructing the carport prior to obtaining all required permits. Please note that there is an additional letter of support for the request.
Thank you. And I would like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record and sign in, please.
My name is Tom Scott, Tom Scott Construction, and I'm here to represent Rebecca Carr, the owner. And I'd like to submit pictures of existing carports in the area to the clerk.
Please.
Is this in the right spot right here to pick up my camera?
If it's in the middle of the exit, it is. There you go.
Like that?
Rotate, there you go.
Okay. This is what we've built, and we were approved for the architecture. So we were disapproved for the zoning because we needed to get in variance. And normally in construction, what we do is, is we'll go out and build something to the first inspection. And we know that, we feel that, you know, the commissioners being fair, that are going to give us the same consideration as the other 10 carports that are in the neighborhood, which I'm going to show you right now. Okay, here's, here's one right here that's built right out to the, to the street, the same type of thing that we're doing. Here's another one here, another one. And this is all within the same area, it's the next street back. Here's another one here at 603 Leonard, one on 1636 G Street right here, another one on 420 Freeman, another one on 604 Leonard, one here on 1649 G Street, another one on 1424 Wyatt, another one on 1635 G Street, that's the same one, I'm sorry, 524 Wyatt. And so basically, what Mrs. Carr is requesting is to do a carport. The existing setbacks allow for only seven foot of a carport from the home. The home is 27 feet from the property line, the front property line. So I mean, a seven-foot carport is not good. I mean, you need a minimum of 12 feet. A car is 12 feet. So what we're asking for is a 16-foot-deep carport with a four-foot overhang instead of a two-foot. So we could give her, I mean, her son drives a Cadillac, which is, I believe, 18 feet long. So give it enough shade to accommodate.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I thought I heard staff say that this didn't meet the minimum requirements. If it doesn't meet the minimum requirements, it's got to go.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak?
My name is Rebecca Carr, C-A-R-R, and I am the owner. And being handicapped, going to different meetings, people come and pick me up, and sometime it's raining, and sometimes it's bad weather. And I would like to have the shed to be able to walk out, at least in my wheelchair, to approach the cars. to walk out, at least in my wheelchair, to approach the cars that I'm getting in.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak?
Yes, my name is Benny Ficklin. I'm her son. I appreciate if you would pass this for her. To my understanding, we've been in this neighborhood since 71 and since when?
I came here in 62.
No, in this neighborhood.
Oh, in this neighborhood in 71.
71, 71.
Anybody knows, she knows.
And to my understanding, it's pretty much going into an historic site. And she just, you know, she's been wanting the home all her life, and she's making, she has the adequate funds, and she just wants to upgrade it, basically, and I appreciate it if you guys pass it for her.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, having known this neighborhood very well and the folks on this street, I think the applicant's made a compelling case about compatibility in the area. This is an older neighborhood. Folks have been in this area for 30, 40 years. I don't have a problem with the young lady being able to come out and get in a car and to have a little shade on the patio, as long as it's structurally sound. It'd be my pleasure to approve it with the current setbacks as the way they are.
Is that a motion?
I wanted to say one thing. I too would, as long as it meets public safety standards under normal circumstances, would likely be okay with this. And I will give you that it's an older neighborhood, and you showed a number of examples of others that may or may not be permitted, but from the get, I was kind of sympathetic, but I think snitching everybody else out in order to justify something that was built improperly is not a good argument. Just because other people have done it, we have to take these things on a case-by-case basis. But when I went through the backup, it says it was a building permit issued for a room addition back in February, I believe, and then in May is when the carport thing. So was there a building permit for a room addition, and then the carport was an afterthought? But clerk, go ahead.
Yes, that's correct.
If I may, they are separate.
Right. And it looked like...
We completed the addition. We've completed that, I believe, three months ago. That has been completed. And then the reason that I was showing that other ones have done it, because I knew that we would be okayed for it.
But see, that's where I disagree with you. You're the contractor. I mean, I'm very sympathetic to these people. I'm assuming they hired you to do the room addition, but by your own testimony, you said you built it hoping for forgiveness. And I think the problem that you very well illustrated in all the other examples is that many of these are probably not built with safety in mind. And when the wind comes up and these things blow over into the neighbors' front windows, those are the kinds of things that are at issue. And then my next question would have been, I'm assuming that your neighbors have no objection to this, and for that it would be fine. But you, sir, are the contractor, and I'm assuming you're a licensed contractor...
Yes, sir.
...who took this job on for these people and didn't do what you were supposed to do as a contractor. And how do I find objectionable to come in here and say, "We built it with the belief that everybody else built them, and then if we got caught, we'd come in and you guys will approve it." That's not the way it should work.
But what was already set in motion when we built that was the permit process. And the permit process, through the permit process, the architectural structural was approved before we built this. You know what I mean? It was already structurally approved. It was in the process and went through the process.
But not for the...
But it stopped for zoning.
But not for the carport and all that because it doesn't meet the setbacks. It couldn't have been approved.
Well, the architecture was. In other words, that this is a sound, structurally viable.
Yeah, but you didn't have an issued permit.
No, it was in the process.
But process isn't approved.
Correct.
Okay, I mean...
But what stopped it is because the zoning, and in a matter of time, you know, we thought that, yes, I can proceed because the architecture has been approved. Now we, you know...
You're a contractor. You must know you can't build something without a permit, especially, wouldn't the first thing you would do to be to check to make sure that it meets the standards? I can understand these fine folks not knowing that and having built it themselves, but they hired a licensed contractor, and you chose to go ahead and just build it without any permits. I find that objectionable.
Well, doesn't the law state that you can start on a project when you're in the process of doing a permit?
You can start on it with an approved permit.
You can't start on it until...
You're the contractor. If that's your belief, I don't know what to tell you, sir. I think you owe these folks some apologies.
Okay, I apologize.
Well, in any event, it'll see my support, but not because of your representation, but because I think these people are aggrieved, having hired you and chose to build something without any permits and with complete disregard of public safety. So, but it will see my support because I'm sympathetic to these folks with the understanding that Public Works eventually will find it to be acceptable and safe. If I may, that would be the Building Department.
I'm sorry, the Building. Yes, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any comments? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Ready for a motion? Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion on item 20 of VAR 34662 for approval subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries.
And that is required to go forward to the City Council at their meeting of August 19th, where they will make the final decision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now move to item number 20 and companion item 21, we're going to 21 and companion item number 22. Item number 21 is a variance 34780. The applicant is Clear Wireless LLC. The owner is Sun City Summerlin Community to allow a 127-foot setback where residential adjacency standards require 310 feet for a proposed 70-foot-tall wireless communication facility, stealth-designed, monopole on the north side of Sun City Boulevard and Lake Boulevard intersection. And item number 22, which is a special use permit, 34779. The applicant again is Clear Wireless LLC. Owner is Sun City Summerlin Community for a proposed 70-foot-tall wireless communication facility, stealth-designed, monopole north of Lake Mead Boulevard at Sun City Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has requested a special use permit for a proposed monopole stealth wireless communications facility located at entry to the Sun City Summerlin Community. Revised plans have been received that depict the facility with an overall height of 65 feet and the antenna array located at the 60-foot center line. The height of the facility does not comply with the 3:1 residential adjacency setback standard and will require approval of variance in conjunction with the special use permit. At the 65-foot height, the variance should be for 127 feet where 195 feet is required. Staff is recommending denial of both requests as the applicant has provided no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstances, and the use is not compatible with the adjacent residential uses. The revised plans and an update of the plan changes have been included in your updated package, and a condition has been added to require conformance to the plans and elevations that are date stamped 7/17/09. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and approval received for these items.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance who wish to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone. Give your name for the record and sign in, please. And for the applicant, we have...
My name is Shane Hennessy York, 7030 Smoke Ranch Road. Here on behalf of the applicant, Clear Wireless. This, as staff mentioned, has been revised with the Sun City Summerlin Architectural Design Review Committee. They requested that we have a maximum height of 65 feet, and we had submitted the incorrect plans to, during, at the time, for original submittal. The site, as it is designed, would be a part of the Sun City Informational Center. So in the line, this is looking south, down, looking south, the backside of the informational center. There are a series of trees, live palm trees, generally in the height of 60 feet, that line the entrance. It's a very, very pretty entrance. Our facility would be in amongst those other existing facilities with a compound adjacent to the informational center. Its compound, its block wall and such would be textured to match the Sun City Informational Center. So you wouldn't know the difference between the site and the tower equipment because it'll be adjacent to the, adjacent to the facility. The reason for the setback in the variance is that there is residential, there are residential properties 127 feet away from this informational center. But as you are aware, this is a very dense area, very dense residential area, and so the opportunity for communication facilities or commercial properties for that matter is rather rare. This is a co-locatable structure, so for future carriers, other carriers that come forward, they can add their equipment to our site. But out of the many sites that I've brought before you, this is probably one of the prettier ones.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance who wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you put the timer on.
And I know my time's up already. And your name, sir?
My name is David Steinman. I'm a Sun City resident, and I got to get a little background. I was member of the Planning Commission for nearly five years, and for the last six months, served as city councilman. I'm also a one 7,781-part owner of common area at Sun City, and I come here to speak to you as an owner. I also come to speak to you as chairman of the Architectural Review Committee of Sun City and also vice president of the Board of Directors of Sun City. I want to get clear on the record how tall this tower is going to be. It was noticed incorrectly at 70 feet. We approved a 60-foot tower with fons allowed to go five feet above that, but the tower itself is 60 feet with fons that can go up above that. The gentleman also mentioned that it is in position so that other communication devices can be added to this. We at Sun City have a policy against that, and right now are going through an issue relative to that, that we don't want any more on there, and if they do, they have to come before Planning Commission to add to these. And we want a condition that there will not be any added unless they come before Planning Commission and the approval of Sun City is there. So I wanted you to know that this has been to two public meetings in Sun City, the Architectural Review and also the Board of Directors meeting. So the public up there has had their opportunity to speak on this matter, and I thank you for your attention, and I'm glad I'm under three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'll now tell you it was a 20-minute time limit.
Oh, thank you.
It's over. Okay, thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
I have a question. Why at the entrance?
This, it's a common facility. In the Sun City Summerlin, there's not a lot of public area that is acceptable. We didn't want to put this right up against, a lot of the other common areas are parks, which are right against a residential home, or right next to it, there's, you know, the block wall. Our site acquisition team worked with the Architectural Design Review Committee, and this is, when we originally proposed this facility, directly to the east of this site, there is a big open park, and the Architectural Design Review Committee requested that we go in this location just to keep everything together.
And I thought you said in your early presentation that this is going to go in with existing. Will this be the first one, or are you...
No, we are existing, we are the first carrier. What I was referring to was the compound. The six-foot block wall compound will be textured and built to match the existing informational center. So the information center, the area where people will go, the welcome center for Sun City Summerlin, our compound will be designed to match that existing building. We are a new communication facility. There's nothing else out there. We will be the first, but our equipment will match the existing building that's there.
So this will be the first fake palm tree?
In this area.
Thank you.
Commissioner, my concern, sir, is when you said there will be other communication towers added to this area, and the reason it concerns me is because on the corner of Buffalo and Alta, where there was one, there was two, there was three, there was four, and you don't get, your services lost completely because there's just so many. So when you said on the record here, other communication will be added, what exactly does that mean?
What I said was that this is available for future colocations by others. So if there is another carrier that comes forward, they, of course, will have to come before the Planning Department and the Planning Commission for any colocation to modify any project, but if they wish to add antennas to this existing tower, they will, it is co-locatable. It will have the structural integrity to hold the antennas for another carrier if the Commission and the Planning Department at that time determines that that is an acceptable design.
Well, I would say for the record that this actually looks aesthetically pleasing. What worries me is what's coming afterwards, and unfortunately, I believe that if you had just this one and we were going to stop right here, you'd see my support tonight, but I don't believe that's the case.
Fortunately for you, any other application, any antenna that comes forward, any project that, even if Clear Wireless would like to put antennas on an existing tower, it has to come back through to see you again.
I understand, but for me to say yes to you and no to the nine behind you, I couldn't do it because it's just not the way I operate, so I apologize.
Any other comments?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I often joke with my children. I'll be driving down, and I'll see one of these palm trees, in particular the pine trees. I'll tell my children, "Hey, you see that tree? That's not really a tree." But it's all, and we all chuckle at it because it's so fake-looking. But I will say, I do like this because it's with other palm trees, and I've often wondered why we couldn't see more of that happening. I mean, as planning, we get sick and tired of the cell towers, and I'm sure you're well aware of that. And so I applaud the efforts. I think you guys have gone about a third of the way, which you can go to hide these towers. You know, I love my cellphone. A lot of people, and we all want good reception. We get really angry when a call is dropped or when we don't have reception, so we need these things. But tell your R&amp;D department to keep trying because they're not there yet, but they're getting closer, and I appreciate the effort, but let's do a whole lot better, and we can. I think you can.
Thank you.
I'd like to move to approve 34780 with conditions.
How about the addition of the two extra conditions suggested?
On the variance, the condition that could be considered would be that the maximum height of the structure shall be 60 feet with a five-foot, with an additional five-foot frond, and then the condition with regard to the subsequent actions would be on your next, on the S U P.
And those would be the conditions I'm moving for.
Motion's been made, and you'll accept those conditions?
Yes.
Okay, motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Post.
Oh, indeed. Oh.
Motion carries. And item 22.
I would again move to approve, well, I don't know if you want more discussion on it.
No.
I would go ahead and move to approve 34779 with the amended conditions.
That would be the additional condition with regard to the height, and an additional condition, if the Commission wishes, that no additional raise, a raise shall be allowed without receiving approval at a public hearing of the Planning Commission. That would be through an S D R.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries.
Both items go forward to the City Council on August 19th.
Thank you. Good night.
Now moved item number 23, which is a variance 34780. The applicant is Clear Wireless LLC. Owner is Sun, oops, sorry, just did that one. 23 is RQR 34682. The applicant is Clear Channel Outdoor LLC. Owner is the... Owner is the Bright Path LLC for a 40-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 820 South Valley View Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, there have been those, recent changes in land use or new development in the surrounding area since the approval of special use permit 4521. Staff recommends approval of this request with a three-year review.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open now. Those in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Good evening. Rod Carter, 2880. On behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor, was ready to come up here running in case Mr. Steinman needed help being the former golf pro in Sun City, so I was ready to move, get a quick kick out of that. We concur with all staff's conditions. Look for your support moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I'm just curious on this. If this is all in order and everything, why wasn't this on the one, motion, one vote part of the agenda?
Not everything, we had no one plus one agenda tonight.
Usually, usually.
That would be a one.
Usually if they're in, if they're, if they're in this part of the, of the agenda, it means that they're, they're not up to par.
It, it takes two to have a one plus one.
Oh, I see.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this matter? Please approach the microphone. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
If, I don't know if any of my commissioners have anything to speak about this, but I did drive by the place today. It's clean, it's properly screened, and it supports the 61809 field check done by staff. And I would like to follow staff's recommends, recommended for approval on RQR 34682. And with that three-year review, is that all right? Thank you.
It's already on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion's been made? Please cast your votes. Post? Motion carries. Thank you.
Council on 819.
We now move to item number 34, special use permit, 3424. Special use permit 34764. The applicant is House of Vino LLC. The owner is Province Village LLC for liquor sales for off-premise consumption within a proposed 1,925-foot square foot convenience store at 7181 North Hualapai Way, Suite 105. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, before you start, I'm gonna abstain on this item because Mr. Etter represents a tenant that is going into a facility that I am the landlord on, so I will abstain.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
The establishment is not located within 400 feet of any church, synagogue, school, or childcare facility that is licensed for more than 12 children. The applicant indicates the hours of operation for the store will be from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. seven days a week. The convenience store contains 48 square feet of, is proposed to contain 48 square feet of beer and wine display and 125 square feet of area behind the cashier for display of selected alcohol, hard alcohol. The total 173 square feet of area dedicated to liquor sales is 9% of the total square footage of the convenience store. Staff finds that this special use permit is consistent with the requirements of the Cliff's Edge Master Plan Development Agreement and development standards and can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the existing surrounding land uses and recommends approval. Please note, we received additional comments after posting.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Good evening. Dave Etter, 777 East Quartz Avenue. I'm here tonight representing the applicant. I see that you have a photo up there, but I also have a site plan that I'd like to show you where we're at. The convenience store will be located in the corner right over here in the shopping center. We believe that the, the convenience store itself will blend in very nicely with the surrounding neighborhood. It's not gonna be a cookie cutter convenience store type store. It's not gonna look like a 7-Eleven from the outside or anything else. It's gonna blend in very nicely, and we truly believe that it will help enhance the shopping center and will be able to cross-section with customers in the area. The area that they're primarily trying to service will be all the homes in the condos that are being built right directly behind the center. These are the homes back here, the shopping center's over here, and you've got homes all around it. So that is the area and the people that they're targeting and hoping to be able to serve.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Bridget Salvi. I live at 7030 North Conquistador Street. I'm actually a county resident, but I'm very close proximity to this proposed site. Personally, I do not see where this kind of an alcohol and unique sales, because when we were at the neighborhood meeting at the YMCA, it was proposed as a unique sales type of store, not just general convenience, but unique wines, unique pizzas or specialized sandwiches and different things, cigars and such. I find that this kind of a store, because of its proposed, are there still seven proposed gambling machines?
Yes.
Yeah. And the off-premise sales, you can get these things a mile away, just down the street at the Smiths. You can go a little further to the Albertsons', which is over the hump, as I would say, from the 95. I believe that the character and if it were even the ambiance of Providence, as it's always been proclaimed, as you see on their billboards, does not support this kind of a store with the alcohol sales and the gambling. You've got a subway that is in direct proximity to the shop. You've got a high school where the kids traffic through because they're walking home. I have high schoolers from Centennial. Mine are raised differently. Hopefully, they won't be creative to try to be under the age of 21 to get an off-premise alcohol item. But I think that the nature of Providence would support something that is without the alcohol. If it was a restaurant with restricted hours, that's different. We're looking at purchase and leave. And I think if you want to purchase and leave, there's a Lee's Liquor, there's a Vino 100, there's an Albertsons', there's a Smith's, there's other things that are available, not to mention the huge vacancies of tenants on Durango between Elkhorn and Centennial Road itself, also near the 215 and Durango as an intersection in general, that would love to have a vacant occupied, vacancy of theirs occupied by a store like this. So I request that your council, your commission would deny this applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Next? We've got two microphones so we can just, one after another, speeds it up quite a bit. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Trowbridge and members of the commissioner. Thank you for your time. Mark Bloom, 10175 West Tropical Parkway, 89149. I'm adamantly opposed to this, primarily because of the gaming and the liquor. Providence, in my opinion, and from their advertising, was, was designed for communities, for families, as opposed to gaming and liquor sales. I attended a community meeting, and it was quite well-attended, and the overwhelming, the overwhelming opinion of those people that attended the community meeting was against this. People stood up one after the other, after the other, and told the folks that were proposing this, we don't want this in our neighborhood. Please take it down the street to Durango. I mean, some were not quite as direct as that, but that was the gist of it overwhelmingly. There were, I, I don't want to speak for House of Vino, but there were people that said, look, we would sort of like a convenience store, we would like a specialty store if you want to do that. Yeah, we would like to go down and pick up a cup of coffee or a loaf of fresh baked bread, but not the liquor and the gaming. And I left that meeting thinking it was a done deal, and House of Vino was going to go, okay, if you don't want it, we're not gonna bring you here, because that's what we were told at the meeting by the House of Vino representatives. They said, the last thing we want to do is shove something in your backyard that you're not gonna support because you are the folks that are gonna come purchase. So with that in mind, with, with the overwhelming voices of the community as opposed, and I also believe that House of Vino is looking at another location on Durango that's currently commercial, I would ask that you, you deny this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Yes. Carol Troth, 10630 Austin Avenue. I'm a, I live in Providence. We recently bought there, and I'm adamantly opposed for this, mostly because of what other citizens have already said. But it is near also a church that's going up on Elkhorn and Hualapai, just south of, or east of Hualapai, that I don't think was brought up earlier in the conversation. Again, I would just like to reiterate some of the points that were already given, mostly that convenience stores, particularly those that sell alcohol and manage, are a magnet for crime. It's not something that I expected when I moved into a master planned community. I saw what was there. I realized they were tendencies that would go in, but this was not what I was told I would be moving into. And I adamantly request that you support those of us that are here asking for you to listen to our voices and represent us and deny their applications.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Jennifer Taylor, 8158 Hawkland Court. I'm here on behalf of myself, as well as on behalf of Northwest Residents for Responsible Growth. I think a couple of people have brought up what I was gonna bring out. First of all, there was a neighborhood meeting, even though staff's report indicates there was not a neighborhood meeting, there was overwhelming opposition of the people that were there. My partner, Lisa Maeda-Rizzo, was actually at that meeting. About 20 people showed up, and the majority were in opposition. As you can see from the map, and I wanna, this, this is in a neighborhood, if you can, let me see. I've got a map right here because I want to show you where I understand the church is gonna go in, so you can see the proximity of it. Did I put it in the right place, Commissioner?
You could rotate.
Okay, oh, it's not showing up on the, it's not showing up on the, okay. As you can see, this is in a neighborhood, and this X right here, as I understand it, is where the LDS church is gonna go. They had a meeting, they had their final inspection on June 18th, which means their certificate of occupancy is almost finalized. They're just finishing their offsites. So to have that type of adjacency along with the high school traffic that Bridget described in conjunction with a store that's going to sell packaged beer, wine, and liquor and be open until midnight is, we, we feel at Northwest Residents for Responsible Growth, wholly inappropriate use. Additionally, House of Vino, when they were at the neighborhood meeting, explained that they wanted to bring, again, as Bridget sort of indicated, a high-class, unique kind of convenience store. And to some extent, all of us are judged by what we've done in the past, and our resume is based on our history. So we went and took a look at what the applicant's other businesses are like, and one of them is over at Charleston and I think it was Eastern. So we wanna just show you some pictures of the type of establishment and let you make your decision as to whether or not you believe that this would qualify as high-class, because we don't believe it would. So here's one picture showing the Bud Light truck that took 45 minutes to unload.
Picture.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Here's another one showing some of the signage. And here's another one of a larger view of the front of these applicants' existing store. And we don't believe that based on this type of establishment that, that they really have the ability to bring high-class into Providence, which, as everybody has said, is intended to be a family area, not a high-traffic commercial area. It's all right there on Durango. Durango is glutted with C-stores, is glutted with taverns, is glutted with packaged beer, wine, and liquor and gaming. The other concern we have at Northwest Residents is that the same applicant is, as we understand it, looking for a second location that would also be in a residential area up Durango at Grand Teton. So, you know, it would seem that, as Bridget pointed out, if they're going to do this, it needs to be in one of the vacant locations on Durango, as opposed to smack in the middle of whether the neighborhood is in Providence or up towards Floyd Lamb State Park. So again, I and the rest of the members of Northwest Residents for Responsible Growth would request that you deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Trent Harper, 10630 Austin Avenue. Just recently moved into Providence. I've actually lived up in the Northwest since I was about eight. So I went to Centennial High School. I've been there for quite a long time. So I can't speak as to other parts of the valley, but I know for the Northwest, it's always been a place where residential is residential, commercial is commercial, and it's always nice. It might not be as convenient for some to have a, you know, you have to drive a couple miles to get to a gas station or so, but that's part of the reason why we moved to Providence. We knew that was, you know, it was supposed to be kind of this exclusive, nice, family-oriented master planned community, and we did not know that this kind of, both gaming and liquor would be so close, just like everybody said, so close to churches, to schools, and especially to houses. So I'd just like to repeat everybody else's request that the council deny this applicant's request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I've heard what these people are saying, and I agree, but to adjust off a lot of what they said. However, I'm gonna throw something out here. This fall, the commercial real estate is gonna go off the cliff. I mean, the banks and everybody are, are bracing for how many hundreds of billions or even trillions of dollars that is gonna go down, down the tubes. And I'm looking right now, I'm seeing vacant, vacant stores in, in that, in that complex. And I've seen some places out there in the Northwest that those shopping centers look deserted. And my thing is this, I understand they, they've got issues, but you better get somebody in there. They're talking about crime and that. You haven't seen any crime unless you've got a vacant shopping center. That thing will be graffitied all over that thing day by day. So I'm, I'm saying there ought to be something to weigh against this, and maybe to keep a store occupied in there, to keep the graffiti down and make it look like it's, it's being inhabited, might not be such a bad idea.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and give the applicant an opportunity to respond to some of the comments.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I respect all the individuals that came up and spoke about this. Part of the reason why they have reduced the amount of alcohol, beer and wine and liquor in the place where it's very common, up to 30% of a convenience store can be filled with liquor or beer and wine, was because of the area itself. They are planning to make it a specialty store, not, as I said, a cookie cutter store. The other pictures that were shown about the Latino Mercado, that store has only been open a little over a year. That store went in a predominantly Latino neighborhood. It is an oversized convenience store. It's really, it's a small mom and pop grocery store like we used to see all over Las Vegas, like when Rancho Market was here, Stewart Market is still here, some other ones. That one had a full-size deli in it, it's got a fresh produce department and all of that. Concerning the delivery truck of the Budweiser truck being there, I don't know how long it was there. I've never seen, I've never seen one out there. Maybe it's just the times I was there. Whether or not it was there 45 minutes, I can't dispute it, can't agree with it. Unfortunately, I was not at the neighborhood meeting. I understood there was a few people that were in opposition, and that was one of the reasons why the applicants went ahead and requested to do the shorter hours and also reduce the liquor. They are planning to do a specialty store, as I said. They are gonna have a little small deli in there. They were planning to put a humidor in there, selected liquors and selected amount of beers and wines, mainly for the convenience. I'm sure that the majority of the people in the neighborhood would like to have something like that there so they don't have to drive another mile or mile and a half in the heat, get out, wait in the long lines, and then come back again. So with that, I do respect their opinions. However, we wish that you would be able to go forward with the application as it is recommended by staff, and the applicant does concur with all staff's recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, over here.
There you go.
I know, I, I, we did a switcheroo on you. As some Housekeeping Matters, I have some additional oppositions, 15 oppositions and one support. I'd like to introduce into the record. And then when you're ready, I'd like to have some discussion on this, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I think you may continue now.
I see a lot of opposition to your proposal. I see 15 more that came in, and at your meeting, I was informed that there were approximately 19 people present, and of those 19, 15 opposed it. Two of them supported it, and then there were approximately two that were maybe if you got rid of the gaming and got rid of the liquor. So I'm really not gonna stay there in support of it. Sounds like to me really had 17 opposing it and two in support. That, that, that's a lot. You've got a lot of opposition there. And I, I'm gonna have a real tough time looking at, at you and saying, yeah, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna, I'm gonna prove this in light of the opposition I see from the residents. That doesn't make any sense. The burden is on you. You gotta, you gotta explain to us. You got to, you got to explain to us why you think we should grant you these exceptions. Um, I know what staff has recommended. Uh, we disagree with staff all the time, uh, and I have no problem disagreeing with staff on this one, uh, because I don't think it's harmonious with the, the environment. I don't think it fits in with the, the neighborhood. I don't think it fits in with what the neighbors want either, uh, their perceptions and their desires. So I have a real tough time with this one, uh, and, and you won't see my support on it without some significant changes. And today, uh, I, I won't be able to prove it as it is written.
Well, as I said, it's over a mile away to the nearest convenience store, which I believe is, actually, it's a Smith's, and then from there you have an Albertson's. I don't know how many people are, are here tonight that were from the neighborhood right directly behind. I believe that it's still under construction. I would venture a guess that the majority of those people, once they get moved in, would love to have a store there. Um, I know there were some issues concerning the church. I believe the church as well without, with, with outside the boundaries of the four hundred feet, and it isn't even built yet. Um, I, again, I respect their opinions, and everybody has a right to their opinion, but we feel that overall that the more people that move into that area, that it will be able to service more people, and it will be a harmonious relationship with the neighborhood.
Did you look at that church to see whether it's built yet?
As I understand it, I just found out today that the permits were just being pulled on it. I don't, I don't believe it's...
Now, my question was whether you saw it today. Did you see it today?
No, I didn't.
So you don't know whether it's been built?
If I understand, the permits were, have been, are getting ready to be pulled on, so it's not even under construction yet.
I, I don't think you're correct on that. I think the church is built. But my point is that you're making representations to us without you having personal knowledge of those, and that's not very wise. Uh, the best thing you could do is to say, I don't know, I'm not informed on that. But it just tells me, it tells me you're, you're stretching, and you're trying to get something when, when really you ought to go back, uh, with your clients and figure out what would be harmonious from the perspective of the neighbors, those that live there, and try to find a plan that would work. I'm all for filling this. I think Mr. Farlow has a great point. Let's fill this up, let's put some tenants in there that can make money. But we need to be wise about it, we need to do it in a way that everybody's going to be happy and not try to force feed someone down, or force something down someone's throat. I don't think that's wise.
I agree. We don't want to force it down anybody's throat either, but I, I do believe that church, it's not, not completed yet. If it is under construction, I have not seen it. I did do a cruise of the area. I do know that there is a school, something off to the northeast, and there's also a church way over to the northeast. I, I don't know exactly where it is, I think it's closer to the, the, uh, the hospital that's over there. But again, it's way, way outside of the four hundred-foot boundaries. Um, and again, we, we strongly believe that once the area fills up a little bit more, that it will provide more of a service than, than a hindrance. Uh, we don't believe it's going to be a problem in the area, and it will help attract other businesses into the same shopping center. You go across the valley right now, as I did a number of months ago, I hit a hundred and twenty different shopping centers in this valley between the city and the county, and most of them are between forty and eighty percent vacancies. And we certainly don't want to see this as having another vacancy. And it's not just about making money. Part of that is true, that's the reason why you open businesses, but it's also to provide the service to the community. And we believe that it will provide a good service to the community, and we believe we can do this in a harmonious fashion.
Mr. Chairman?
Um, looking at this picture, is, is, is this a two-story building?
No, it's just, the elevations on it, it's, it's a single-story building. They just did it on the corners. They just raised the corners. I, I don't know exactly why it was done that way, but it's, it's a single-story building. They did it on the corners here.
Okay. And, and, you know, I'm just listening to the neighbors, and I'm trying to understand what you're saying as well, and you're saying this is going to provide a service and an amenity to the neighborhood, but when I look at both of your requests, uh, ones for liquor and the others for gaming, I, I don't see anything presented for the specialty. Like, we're going to have a, a cheese or a, you know, it's ki, kind of like the Whole Foods type store to me especially, and there, there's no gaming in those, but it's kind of unique. But then when you look at your floor plan, and you see freezer for the beer, uh, cooler for the beer, slot machine rack, that's a cookie cutter convenience store. Now, you can say it however you want it to try to make it specialty, but once you add those two items in there, not amenities, those two items in there, and, and frankly, I think these ner, these neighbors want to be serviced with goods as opposed to liquor and gaming.
I agree.
That's just what I'm, that's what I'm hearing from them.
That's what it's going to be, that's why they're only going to have forty-eight square feet of the walk-in cooler is going to be designated to cold beer and wine. Forty-eight square feet, that's it. The liquor will be behind the counter, where it can only be accessed by the supervisory personnel. Nobody can just walk over and grab a bottle and walk out with it. Kids can't be close to it, nobody can be close to it. And it is going to be specialty liquors. So that will all be secured behind the cash register and behind the supervisory personnel. They have five gondolas set up for foods and for cheeses. Unfortunately, or maybe it's fortunate, I don't know which for sure, but it doesn't, we don't require special use permits for cheeses and for milks and things like that. What we do require the special use permits for is for the beer and wine, the liquor, and the gaming.
Right. And when you say specialty, I, I think you're stretching that word a little bit. It's probably going to be the same Bud, Miller Lite, Miller Genuine Draft.
I'm sure there's going to be some of that, but they are planning to go with the higher...
It's going to look like a Mickey's neighborhood, but, you know, it...
They are planning to go with the higher-end liquors. My understanding is, is that the applicants have planned to go in and, and ask neighbors as they're opening up the store, what they want to see is products to, to be in the store, and those are the items that they're planning to carry. If people don't drink Bud Light, what's the point of bringing in Bud Light? If they don't drink Patron Tequila, what's the point of bringing it in? So they want to bring in what the neighborhood wants to have in.
What if they want none?
Well, to be honest with you, in Las Vegas, and in almost any other city in the world...
Answer the question, what if they want none, would, would your applicant be willing to cater to that? Because then the neighborhood could truly say, you know, we have a specialty shop up here, you can come and get a variety of items, and guess what? You're not going to be, um, bombarded with maybe somebody out in the parking lot, or you're not going to have to deal with all that that comes in and out, you know? It's just, why can't you do it without?
Unfortunately, in this economy, it would be pretty tough to make a store, a convenience store, a specialty store, any store like that work without beer and wine. Even when I first opened up, it helped open up Marche Bucoup, we had to go with a beer and wine license in there, and then we had to do specialty licenses, because as a specialty store, he just couldn't make it. It took him years to be able to build up the clientele, and the only way we were able to get that store to be successful, and it was in a beautiful shopping center, was to put in beer and wines. And again, he brought in specialty beer and wines. He didn't bring in the Red Mountains and the Ripples and stuff like that. He brought in the wines and the cheeses and the meats and the deli products that the people of the neighborhood requested. And fortunately, it did work out, but it took years of hard work to get there. To try and do it without beer and wine, City of Las Vegas, County of Clark, without beer, wine, and gaming, I, I don't know of any store in this town, a specialty store otherwise, that has been successful without the products of beer and wine. I, I wish it was otherwise, but it is what it is.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Please. Mr. Queen?
I don't ever believe in saying that, um, we divide our city by classes, that we want a higher-class location in one area versus in a different neighborhood where the same thing can be done. And I just, I have a couple of questions about this project, but I wanted to put on the record that this isn't a, um, decision about people that think, that want a high-class business, but yet down in Ward Three, they're considered low-class businesses. I took a little offense to that. My concern is, is when that Budweiser truck comes flying through that driveway over there, and I don't see any back ways for you to get in and out, your encroachment is so small, I don't possibly see the deliveries. I'd like to know the time of the deliveries. I, I have a few questions on how you're going to get all these things in and out, when you've got these lovely pedestrians, these families, people walking, you know, wh, when is this going to happen? Because the, you have to go in the front, there's nothing in the back to do this with, and I kind of feel like your space is limited to, if in fact this was ever passed, to adequately and most importantly, safely deliver your, deliver the products.
Products will be coming in through this driveway here. They have all this driveway back here that they can exit out of. They can also exit out back here and come back over this way around the back of the building.
Where's the trash?
The hours of shipments, I'm sure, can be regulated if, if your desire is to restrict their operations as far as deliveries is, are concerned, I'm sure that can be put in as part of another condition.
Could you also point out for me the trash enclosure, please, for that store?
That I'm not familiar with.
Thank you.
When I was last there, that part of it hadn't been all, all put together, so I do not know.
Thank you. I think we're ready for a motion, if there's no further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I vote for denial of item number twenty-four.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post? We now move to item number twenty-five, which is special use permit thirty-four seven fifty-sixty-five. The applicant is House of Vino owner, Province Village LLC, for a gaming, incidental gaming machines only, within a proposed one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five square foot convenience store at seventy-one eighty-one North Hualapai Way, Suite One Ten. Staff report, please.
Uh, the seven gaming machines will occupy a total of twenty-eight square feet in the center of the store. Our staff finds that the, uh, the, this special use per, permit is consistent with the requirements of the close-age, master-planned community and development standards, and can be conducted in a manner that is compatible to existing surrounding land uses, and recommends approval. Please note, we received two additional protests after publication.
Thank you. Now, the public hearing is open. Those who attend and wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name to the record, for the applicant.
Good evening again, Dave Edder, seven 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 East Quartz Avenue, representing the applicant. And we just wish that you would move forward on this one as well with staff's recommendations, and we hope for an approval.
Thank you. Public hearing is open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak? Please approach the microphone and give your name to the record.
Yes, Commissioner, again, Bridget Salvi, seventy thirty North Conkey Store. Clarification, were these two, although we're voting on you, are voting on them separately, didn't we adequately present our view to address both at the same time in our, or do you want to hear from all of us again and occupy more of the evening?
Well, I would imagine that everyone understands the, the positions pro and con.
Okay, well, then to...
And if you could speak on behalf of everyone and say, we all hold our positions, we haven't, you know...
Well, that maybe can be done by just a simple raise of the hands, instead of hearing from all of us, for those of us that just spoke a moment ago, with regards to this motion, this SUP on the gaming, do you agree in the applicant, or do you wish for, those of us that are here, do you wish for, uh, denial?
Okay.
Okay, that's our opinion.
This is like the show, um, America's Got Talent. We can see each one of you.
So there is a simple savings of time. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in attendance wish to speak? Please approach the microphone.
Carol Troth, one zero six three zero Austin Avenue. I do want to address one thing. I think that, um, the Commissioner at the end here, I'm sorry, is it Ellsworth? I think that you've, um, directly on point stated that the biggest problem, I think, with this is, is that they haven't been out to see what the neighborhood's done and how it's growing. And I understand that we are in an economic, economic hurt. However, um, many of us in Providence have also felt that, just in the homes. I personally live in a community that the builder has gone out of business, and I have empty lots in my, um, development. And I'm okay with that, because I'd rather have that than have half-built homes for people to find vacant areas in. And I just further want to express the fact that this is very close to a religious establishment that is almost completed, not, not having permits built. I can see it from Darrell in Hualapai, and that's a good half-mile away from where the, the church is coming up. And I can see Centennial Hills from, Centennial High School from about there. And all we're asking for is for you guys to please listen to us and to respect our wishes, and to, um, do what we've asked of our elected officials. So please, um, hear our voices and know that we are adamantly against this in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Here we are again. And I would like to point out what that lady just said, that the state of Nevada does not guarantee a view. Never, doesn't do it. That's the way the law, that's the way the law is. The other thing, I mean, I think that Mr. Better made a point there. I mean, if, if it takes a certain thing to get established in, in the city of Las Vegas, where it's gambling, beer license, whatever it is, maybe you can do it with a review process or something. I'm saying this, I'm reading and reading and reading, and I'm telling you, this commercial real estate is going to go off the cliff this fall. I mean, the, there's a disaster coming, and Las Vegas is going to get hit bad. And whatever it takes, you better find somebody to get in here and occupy some of this stuff to hold down the graffiti. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Yes, thank you. Mark Bloom, ten one seventy-five West Tropical Parkway, Commissioner and Chairman. Thank you very much. You know, just to piggyback on what the gentleman said that just spoke before me, we, we do need stores up there. And at the neighborhood meeting, I'd like to point out just two items. One was that Bridget, who spoke so eloquently a minute ago, threw out an idea to the people from House of Vino, what about a House of Hobby? What about a hobby shop? And that, we, we wouldn't be standing here opposing it. And you could make a lot of money with a hobby shop, because you can't find one in town, but guess what? You can find liquor and you can find gaming. To piggyback on that idea, the gentleman from House of Vino represented and respectfully said that we don't want to put the type of liquor, uh, we want, I'm sorry, we do want to put the type of liquor that you want there, and we do want to put the specialty items that you want there. But I don't think what they're hearing is, we don't want it. We don't want the gaming, and we don't want the liquor, and I know this is just for the gaming. So I would like to oppose this, the gaming portion of it. Again, we're not the party of no, we're not the, we're not the, the Providence of no. We would love to have a hobby shop, and House of Hobby would make a lot of money. So thank you very much, I'm opposed to this.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Um, Jennifer Taylor, again, eighty-one fifty-eight Hawkland Court. I just wanted to follow up again on the comments about the graffiti. I live just up Durango, where House of Vino is going to be proposing another shop right in the middle of a residence. And that area, even though, um, the shop, the shopping center where it will, where it wants to go into is actually, I don't know, sixty percent occupied, it's covered in graffiti, covered in graffiti every night, and those, um, tenants have to deal with that on a daily basis. And now, the taggers have started tagging on concrete because they know that it can't be easily removed. So for somebody who doesn't live in that immediate area and who hasn't been dealing with what we've been dealing up in the northwest, which is, um, the highest rate of vacancy from foreclosures residentially, a huge rate of vacancy from commercial, from just glutted overbuilding over here.
Mr. Chair, I, I've got to stop you.
Sorry, Commissioner Evans.
What does this have to do with the gaming component? That's what I want you to...
Because it's a C-store, that's, it's a component of a C-store that is simply unnecessary and unwanted in that neighborhood. That supplemental use permit ties into the cookie cutter C-stores we've seen up and down Durango.
So basically, the same arguments that you made earlier are the...
True. I just wanted to respond specifically to the issue related to, and again, I'm not sure then what, um, I think it's Todd's comments about graffiti and empty vacancies have to do with the gaming either. So all I was doing was trying to rebut that and let you guys know that even where we do have some decent occupancy, we're, we're getting horrible tagging up in the northwest. So I don't think that having gaming up there is going to allow the type of establishment that's going to populate that center with the types of businesses that are really going to support the neighborhood and are really going to bring a quality of life to the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Now, the applicant's opportunity to respond, if you'd like. Saying now, the public hearing is closed, and turn over the finding commissioners for discussion and possible motions. and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motions.
Mr. Chairman, I just, excuse me, make a few quick comments and maybe my fellow commissioners can advise me differently. I live in an older part of town. In, there are areas where you can, anywhere you can spit, you can get a drink, a liquor, beer. And I'm sometimes frustrated, because some of the smaller stores have gone out of business and you can't buy produce, you can't buy apples, you can't buy food. But certainly, you can get liquor. And I find that problematic. But regardless, we often, particularly in the older areas, will deny special use permits for liquor and convenience stores. We often will approve beer and wine, but generally restrict the liquor. And yet, the big box stores, which in many cases are less security oriented, almost have a, they still have to go through the special use permit, but they all get the full liquor licenses, you know. And I think that creates a disadvantage for the smaller mom-and-pop store. I don't know how to address it. I think the issue and the idea was that you didn't want parking lots full of people with brown bags drinking and, you know, et cetera, broken bottles. But I'm always concerned about how do we level the playing field? I don't know. I respect the neighbors out here. I respect their opinion. I absolutely respect my colleague who represents this area. But I'm a little dismayed that, that the level of opposition, and I'm not really sure where I think that a few video poker machines would be an incredible detriment to a center. I've never been of the great opinion that they belong in every grocery store and pharmacy and convenience store in town. But that horse went out of the barn a long, long time ago. And with respect to the gentleman's statement about a hobby shop, I would agree with you, but I would almost guarantee you, the money's in the gaming, the money's in the liquor. These guys don't build these businesses just for kicks. It's all about profit. And I can't imagine most other kinds of stores competing with what you intend to do. The issue for me is always how well they're run and how can we ensure that whatever is ultimately approved is a good thing for the community. And for whatever reason, these folks have come out and are adamantly opposed to that, opposed to your project. And somewhere, there's a disconnect. So I don't think it's the, I don't think your store is a panacea, but neither do I think that if it were approved, that it would be to the great detriment of the neighborhood. But these people who have a stake in it feel otherwise. So I'm sort of in an impasse here. And I don't think any of us want to see empty shopping centers, you know, that's not a good thing. But I would disagree with you, Mr. Farlow. We shouldn't be lowering the bar and allowing any and every special use permit, because I'm afraid that's the thing that we're going to hear over the next few years. Do you want an empty center? So let's put an adult-oriented business in there, just to keep it alive. I'm not buying it. But I'm sympathetic with your plight and I'd be curious to what my fellow commissioners have to say.
I agree with you. If it was a tavern, I wouldn't be standing here, because I would feel that a tavern would be in an inappropriate use. A small nineteen-hundred-square-foot store that can provide a number of services, to include beer and wine, small amount of liquor and a few slot machines, it's not a casino, it's a few slot machines. However, the other issue is dead, so.
Thank you. Mr. Ellsworth?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Evans, I really appreciate the last comment you made there, or actually, all of your comments, but particularly the last one to Mr. Farlow, which is, we're not going to lower the standards, because the economic times are difficult. No, in fact, I believe just the opposite. This is the time we elevate our expectations to make sure that the communities and our neighborhoods are correct, that we don't just throw things in there out of a rush, that we make sure that those who go in there are compatible, they're going to be successful. Quite honestly, Mr. Edder, I think your project is close, but you're not there yet. And I think with some more true open-mindedness and conversations with the neighbors, you'll probably come up with a plan that'll be successful. But I can't support this. And so to that end, I move for denial of item number twenty-five.
Okay, motion has been made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Both actions are final action. In the absence of an appeal, within ten days, if they are appealed, they will be re-noticed prior to a public hearing of the City Council.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Have a great evening.
Thank you. We now move to item number twenty-six, which is special use permit thirty-four, seven-ninety-one. The applicant is Cash Express. The owner is Alta Decatur LLC, is to add an auto title loan use to an existing non-conforming financial institution specified at four-fifty-nine South Decatur Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request for a special use permit to add an auto title loan use within an existing non-conforming financial institution specified. The existing use is located within a developed shopping center and is compatible and harmonious with surrounding development. The addition of an auto title loan use at this location will not increase the intensity or the nonconformity of the existing financial institution specified use. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the request with the deletion of condition number three. Please note that there are additional letters of protest for this item.
Thank you. Now declare the public hearing open. And anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record, for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Tracy Reedy. I'm with Becker Enterprises. We are actually the owner of Alta Decatur, that owns the shopping center. Many of you may know Barry Becker and his brothers that have done several developments throughout this area. And I want to just first thank staff for all your patience this week, as you kind of helped us work through this process. I'm here in support of our tenant, who is a wonderful business person in the area, along Decatur, where there's many vacant spaces. And she's trying to diversify her income and add on this special use. However, in the past, there was the auto title loan use in this center previously, another prior tenant, so it doesn't conflict with that. But she's a great business owner. She's approved the space. You may see some of the pictures there, where she's gone in and she's, once again, an area that's got some little older use on it. She's gone in and improved the security, she's improved the paint, just the, her presence there is just, you know, once again, a proof of some of the pictures you're going to see of how clean and how she runs her business. So we really do support her and want to just let her address any other needs or any other things.
Thank you. My name is Sandra Perry, address four-fifty-nine South Decatur. And yes, I have come before you to ask you to approve our request. We find, I've been in business since nineteen ninety-seven as Cash Express in Las Vegas. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-one. And to my knowledge, our company has never had a complaint that was against our company filed with the state. All audits have always passed without any problems. We have a long list of devoted customers that use our services as Cash Express from time to time. And being a small independent business owner, I'm able to work with the customers individually, whereby a lot of the larger companies like myself cannot do that, because of the vast employees they have and et cetera. But we just feel that we would like to expand our business and offer this as a service. And I think we would do a good job offering a title loan business. And I think the area is compatible for that. And I just ask you to approve our request. Thank you.
Any agenda items?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motions.
May I just ask a quick question, please?
Please.
Ms. Perry, I visited your site today and it was, it's nice, it's very well-kept, it's lovely. I don't understand this title loan business. So if somebody gives you the title and, you know, they can't come up with the money to get it back, what happens to the cars? They're not stored on that property, because there certainly isn't room, right?
No, no, they would never be stored on the property. We would contract with a local towing company, a storage company, and we would go through the legal procedure. Then if we do have to repossess, we don't want to do that. And of course, we would send letters, give the customer thirty days to respond and et cetera. So that's not our intent to go into the repossession business at all.
I just want to say for the record that I would add that as a condition, that there will not be any cars stored on that property.
Of course not.
Because there's no room.
If I may, they're not allowed by code.
Okay, thank you.
I'm curious what the interest rate is on that.
On the title loans? Probably, we haven't decided, but we will be compatible with others. It probably, it ranges in this city from anywhere from twenty dollars per hundred, maybe more sometimes, to ten dollars per hundred. And the law is such that we have to go by state regulation, of course. There is not a cap on it. But of course, we will be competitive and we are known to-
I'm just curious what that would come out to annually?
Well, if it's ten percent, it'd be a hundred and twenty percent APR. If it's twenty, it would be two forty.
So it'd be two hundred and forty percent annually?
Yes, it could be, if we decide on that. We have not made that decision as of yet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. No further discussion. I think we're ready for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of a SUP three-four-seven-nine-one, following all staff's recommendations and wishing you a lot of luck. Thank you.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries.
And that goes forward to City Council on August nineteenth.
Okay, now I'd like to call a brief recess. Thank you very much. It'll only be about five minutes.
Well, I certainly was last time.
Part of the study is in one week. He said he'd be hoping.
Well, let me tell you, if you don't have any capital letters, I will watch this tomorrow at work.
It doesn't look like you have the skills with Windows and styles to be able to pull off.
That's true. Probably would.
No, I have everything.
I have everything with. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
Good night.
You too.
Oh, thank you. I will. I printed out the changes I was doing, and then I forgot to bring them, so I emailed them to you already, but I forgot to bring my.
Yeah, Tom, I appreciate.
You met her.
Take care.
Good night. Certainly we'll attempt to live up to that. We'll get together. Have a good day.
I'll sign it after.
I mean, I would.
Well, you're out there wondering. I would. 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 I was curious. You know, an hour?
You know me. I can talk and talk and talk.
Well, for sure I'll be invited back really soon. I've got about two hours, starting with my, you know, March third, nineteen sixty-three. What time was it? That would be annoying. And then the second hour will be all about the car ride home from the hospital. Okay. You know, the latest I ever did know anything related to the block, so. Oh, I can make that. Did you make that? I don't think so. No, I don't do that. No. It helps us when I'm happy with it, so. Just. A whole planet. Oh, yeah. Oh, that I don't think. Part of things. To order up each thing and everything. When the, when the, um, when the decision is to put it down over again. And you have to understand, when the, when that issue has been, a lot of women have lost a lot of their spirit. There's eight type of sound. And so for her to go from that and then being, and being a doctor very competitive, and she was sad. So she kind of fought her way up that. And then all of a sudden, it's like, you know what's good, I'm just gonna go. And it's just a complete one eight. But that's where the job now is. It would be ten years, ten months, three, five years from now, that will not seem like a hard decision at all. It's just so obvious. We went through the same thing. Not, my wife wasn't sort of on that sort of track, but it was, um, she was pushing hard to get going and. She was, you know, every day she said, right, everything that, just know. Yeah, I got it. No, no, no. And she's, I like the thing she's hard. Who knows what's true. It absolutely is. Are you sure? How did she, uh? Well, thank you. I don't know. And. I'm not sure. 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 The railway embrace is good. Isn't that hilarious? It's, it's one. Excuse me, by the way. No, maybe he does it. I'll be a year. But it's. You know. You want to go right now, though, and you want to. Like eighteen dollars. You got it. Yes. You know. You want to go right now, though, and you want to. Like eighteen dollars. You got it. You know. You want to go right now, though, and you want to. Like eighteen dollars. Isn't that hilarious? It's, it's one. Excuse me, by the way. No, maybe he does it. I'll be a year. But it's. You know. You want to go right now, though, and you want to. Like eighteen dollars. You got it. You know. You want to go right now, though, and you want to. Like eighteen dollars. You got it. You know. You want to go right now, though, and you want to. Like eighteen dollars. You got it. You know. You want to go right now, though, and you want to. Like eighteen dollars. You got it. You know. You want to go right now, though, and you want to. Like eighteen dollars. You got it. You know. You. You. I'm thinking. No, you're not. So she's moving on differently. Great. We try to be as bad. I mean, um, you're bringing everything on that. Well. Half of it. I was wondering if friends might like it. It got. Thanks for asking. She's. 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 I was wondering if friends might like it. It got. Thanks for asking. She's. 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 Which one is your wife? Is it heavy hitters in here? No. Did you notice he was cheering out? They changed my clothes. I know you don't care anymore. You're only looking five minutes between this and that. Now I take it earlier. And they don't have. I'm walking down the street.
Will the superstars of planning and development, the superstars of planning and development, five minutes curtain?
And I thought, that seven thirty must be late. And I'm waiting for my seven thirty five. And I'm waiting, I'm waiting. He gets there seven thirty. Which then makes me five minutes late. I guess it's all fine. After the, it's so funny, I think, that ladies push it into five thirty. So now I'm never gonna be standing in the bus because they, they move. I'm not. She's waiting on the express. She knows. I'm not. 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 They're ready. Look at it. Number ten.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order again. We can now move to item number twenty-eight, which is text thirty-four eight ninety-one. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas. It's a discussion and possible action to amend title nineteen point oh six point one seven zero to make revisions and updates related to the hillside development standards and guidelines. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, what we have before you this evening is amendment to our hillside ordinance. When the ordinance was originally drafted and adopted, all of the areas within the hillside overlay were designated for residential uses. However, a recent case has shown us that that may not always be the issue. And so consequently, where there is language referring to residential dwellings, we've changed that terminology to reflect a more generic term, that of structures. And so that is the change that you have before you this evening again, so that it applies equally to all development that is found within the hillside overlay area.
Thank you. Do we have a public hearing on this one?
Yes.
Okay. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance who wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Seeing them, we clear the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioner for discussion and possible motion.
Flynn, if we don't do anything on this, does that mean the project that was approved won't go forward?
No, it does not mean that, unfortunately.
No, okay. Well, this is one of those corrections that I understand why you stand, but wasn't the hillside ordinance always anticipated to deal with residential issues?
It, it was meant to deal with every type of structure. And it said structure about eighty-five to ninety percent of the times, but in a couple of instances, it said residence.
It said residential dwelling.
And now it says development.
It says development or structure.
I just think we, we still should encourage the fact that our hillside should be limited to residential. I mean, I, I don't agree with where the potentially this takes us, but that's just, I think those hillsides are, um, commercial development is too intense for, to be placed on those hillsides.
And certainly, there's no anticipation of any rezonings or anything. It's just to clarify that all structures, whether it would be a community building, or a public facility of some sort, or anything else that were to be allowed in the future, the issue is the protection of the hillside regardless of the type of structure.
Thank you.
I think with no further discussion, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
For approval of text three, four, eight, nine, one.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Post. Motion carries.
And that goes forward to City Council in ordinance form?
We now move to item number twenty-nine, which is DIR thirty-four, nine, eighty-eight. The applicant owner is City of Las Vegas. It's progress report by the Planning and Development Department regarding the city's sustainability initiative. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm here to give you a brief update on the implementation of the Sustainable Energy Strategy. Can I have the PowerPoint, please? The mayor and council adopted the Sustainable Energy Strategy in September of two thousand and eight. As a result of that strategy, that policy document, we have been recognized, the City of Las Vegas, as one of the leading cities for climate change and energy policy. Next slide, please. The city will be receiving approximately five point four million dollars in stimulus money under the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. This program will leverage that money with some bonds and other funding sources under the stimulus package, in combination with standard municipal bonds, some rebates from NV Energy, and the Green Building Special Revenue Fund to complete about twenty-eight million dollars in projects. Next slide, please. The Sustainable Energy Strategy is unique in that it requires that savings from energy projects in one year be reinvested in future years. So with this initial investment, we'll be not only saving enough energy money to pay the bonds, the debt service, on this initial investment, but also be returning to the city about five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in year one. By reinvesting that, by 2030, we'll be investing up to nine million dollars. Next slide, please. The results of that will be about a thirty-five percent reduction in energy demand from the city, and at the same time, about twenty-five percent of that demand from the city will be met by renewable sources. And also, in the Energy Strategy, it calls for a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. This strategy will help the city reduce its carbon footprint by about forty percent by the year 2030. Next slide, please. So we're attacking it sort of in three areas. The city uses about sixteen million dollars a year in energy, and primarily in three areas. One is treating wastewater. The other is streetlights, and the other is buildings. And those are about equal, about five, six million dollars each. So for buildings, we're going to be installing solar-covered parking at city facilities. Right now, we're planning on seventeen sites. Next slide, please. These sites will be distributed across the community. Obviously, covered parking has a huge benefit in this environment. And using that covered parking to put solar panels on top and offset the energy costs for these public facilities, for sport field lighting and community centers and so on, that will help the city continue to provide those services at a reduced rate. Next slide, please. Here's an example of four sites. Veterans Memorial Community Center, we're going to be covering eighty spaces with eighty kilowatts of solar energy. The fire station, there's a few fire stations, we'll be putting in some covered parking. And Natural History Museum downtown, sixty-four spaces, sixty-four kilowatt. You can see that we'll be able to cover most of the parking at that facility, and the West Service Center. Overall, when we're done, we'll be installing about one megawatt of power on covered parking and covering over nine hundred spaces in the city. Next slide, please. At the same time, a little bit separate from the twenty-eight million, we're also investing about twenty-two, twenty-three million dollars to put in up to four megawatts of solar energy out at the Water Pollution Control Facility. When we initially started this project, with the cost of solar, we anticipated about three megawatts, but at the time, it was about ten dollars a kilowatt for solar. Now it's down to about five, six dollars. So we think that that budget is going to stretch quite a bit further. That will help offset the energy demand out at the Water Pollution Control Facility. In addition, we're putting in projects to use the methane gas out there, and all of those combined will provide about a third of the water pollution control facility's energy through renewable resources. Next slide, please. At the same time, as we're putting up renewable energy for buildings, we're also going to be doing some retrofits. We're engaging a company to do energy audits on city buildings. And then using stimulus money, we'll go in and do retrofits. This is some of the low-hanging fruit that will allow us to really reduce our energy demand. Next slide, please. Exterior lighting upgrades. As I said, the streetlights use about a third of the city's energy. And in this first round, we're looking at replacing about eighteen thousand lights with induction lighting. Not only does that reduce energy demand, but also the lights last seven times longer than the existing lights, so it reduces the maintenance cost quite significantly. So for about six and three-quarter million dollars investment, we'll be saving the city about a million dollars annually. Next slide, please. Now, in addition to the work we're doing at the city, we're also... The Sustainable Energy Strategy calls for the creation of some programs for the community. So what we did a couple of years ago is participated in the creation of Home Free Nevada. This is a program based on Energy Star's Home Performance Program. And basically, it's for providing energy audits for residential homeowners. And what we're going to be doing with some of the stimulus money to be able to get it out to the community is providing a rebate for people to perform a home energy audit. And we're doing it in partnership with NV Energy, so that at the same time, you do the energy audit and you get all the information on your home, you'll also be required to do an AC tune-up through NV Energy, and we'll be able to prove out savings on energy immediately for the homeowner, so we can report back to the Department of Energy. Not only are we providing homeowners with the valuable information about the performance of their home, but we're also doing some improvements that will immediately save them money. Next slide, please.
Is that available for anybody, or is it restricted?
The rebates, right now, we're going to be launching a pilot in about four weeks where we're going to hold some neighborhood meetings in areas where the homes are using more energy than typical homes, just to perfect the process. And we expect that by about October, we'll be in a position to open that up to any resident in the city. Now, I've also been meeting with the Energy Block Grant Coordinators for Clark County, Henderson, North Las Vegas, and they're preparing programs similar to ours. They've set aside some money, and we're working together on the city's pilot so that we can all sort of perfect the same program. So in October, anywhere in the valley, our hope is that you'll be able to participate in this program. Now, at the same time, we've participated in establishing a nonprofit organization called Green Chips. They'll be doing a few things. One is acting as an umbrella organization. There's a number of organizations out there that have sustainability committees, green committees, and so on. And we're going to help sort of bring all those together and try to create one common voice for sustainability in the community. But most importantly, we'll be creating a revolving loan fund. One of the barriers to people being able to perform energy retrofits on their homes and renewable energy, putting solar on the rooftop, is a loan. So we're going to be creating a low-interest loan fund, so that when you do the projects on your home with all the incentives that are offered, the tax credits from the federal government, and the incentives and rebates and so on, and a low-interest loan, the cost of those improvements will be far less than the savings you'll realize on your energy, so it's a win-win for everybody. In addition, these programs with the Green Chips and the Home Free Nevada program are the programs with the stimulus that will create jobs more than any other program. We're creating a whole new industry here for home performance contracting.
Are these jobs you mentioned, are they construction jobs? Are they long-term permanent positions? What are we talking about?
They are long-term permanent positions. A nice part about that is that the jobs will be anywhere from apprentice through journeyman, and then beyond, where you can actually get the certifications that are required and the expertise to be an auditor, which is sort of the next level up, more of a sort of a professional occupation, on into owning your own small business. So there's a tremendous amount of opportunity. And we fully expect that this will be kicking off this entire new industry. Not only are we going to be providing money from the stimulus money, but from the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, the money we're getting from HUD, all of those homes, hundreds of millions of dollars of investment, those homes will go through this program as well, so we'll be turning over energy-efficient homes to people when we touch those homes. So that's going to create a tremendous amount of demand for contractors and for workers. And we've been spending a lot of time with the Southern Nevada Workforce Investment Board. I met with the Department of Employment Training Rehabilitation today. They're very excited about what we're doing, because they understand that this is where they're going to be able to spend their stimulus money to do the job training, to create the workforce, to take these jobs. Next slide, please. At the same time, the city... In two thousand and six, the City Council adopted the Green Building Program. With the funding that we have now, we're going to be providing some incentives. Roughly, it works out to about a thousand dollars per home. And in order to qualify for that, you either have to build to a LEED standard, you have to be part of the NV Energy's Energy Plus Program, Green Globes, or Southern Nevada Home Builders Green Building Partnership. Last year, under Energy Plus, they built over five hundred homes to that standard. It requires the home to be thirty percent more energy efficient than current energy code. And not very many of those were built in the city. So we believe by offering this incentive, that people will be building to a higher green standard in the city, and we'll be able to track some of that development into our community. And the cost of that rebate is offset in year one by the additional property tax revenues coming back to the city. Next slide, please. We're also working with UNLV on outreach and education to promote the program to the community, create a website where people can go in and get real-time information on the renewable energy projects. They can see the project and get readouts in terms of how much energy is providing and so on. Next slide, please. I think what's important to recognize is all this money is new money in the economy, so it's going to be expanding the economy, creating jobs, creating tax revenues back to local government to continue providing services to the community. The projected energy savings for homeowners participating in these programs is over fifteen million dollars annually. That's money that will be spent back into the economy, as well as if we're able to provide incentives for residential and commercial green building. That's going to create jobs and create property tax revenue back to the city. So that's sort of in a nutshell, the implementation strategy for the Sustainable Energy Strategy. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Perrigo, do you have a copy of this total package that I could have condensed to look at? Or do we just get it on the screen?
The PowerPoint?
Yeah, I'd love to see it.
Absolutely. I can either...
I mean, it's not a rush thing. I just would like to have it, because I think it's real important to keep for me.
Okay, I can send it to you electronically, or I can send you a hard copy?
Or even in my next Planning Commission meeting, would that be nice? Thank you, sir.
You bet. Absolutely.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I just want to... I heard Mr. Perrigo mention the Workforce Investment Board, and I currently work for that board, so I just wanted to put that disclosure on there. I don't think there's any contracts that have been signed. And so I feel confident on voting, and I'll...
You're fine to vote, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Very good. The Workforce Connection Board. I'd like to congratulate staff on an excellent job on a very cutting-edge type of project, and the quality of it, the thoroughness, is absolutely outstanding for the contribution to the future of not only Las Vegas, but all of Southern Nevada in a leadership role in renewable energy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? I think we're ready for... We're not even going to vote on this. We're just going to just...
I actually had a comment, not so much on the PowerPoint, but, Mr. Perrigo, I was always impressed with the Springs Preserve and their shade structures, which have a solar element to them. And I'm curious, and perhaps, and maybe Mr. Truesdale, you might know better than anybody, but I'm curious about big-box shopping centers with large parking lots. As everybody knows, this time of year, you go to the grocery store or whatever, and you go out to the parking lot, and if it's a sea of asphalt, it's... You know, your car can be a hundred and... You know, well, four hundred degrees for my car, it feels. But those shade structures significantly cool the car, but they also provide... You know, we've got that free sun energy. Is that cost-effective in the long term if it were to be amortized, I wonder? So that when new building comes forward, or even if it were to be contemplated for an older center, where they're creating electricity and putting it back into the grid, would the cost savings for electricity justify the outlay? And is it something that we've contemplated? Because other than the springs and perhaps a few other isolated cases, I've never seen it here. And as everyone knows, the warming of our community is based substantially on the open asphalt. Does anybody know if that's something that's contemplated? If there's any incentives? If it's cost-effective, and if it's something that we can promote?
I can answer that, Mr. Chairman.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, the... It's interesting. The project at the Springs Preserve is a really nice project, but it is on a single-access tracking, and it's really, really expensive and would not pay off. It's more of sort of a demonstration. It's a great project. The ones that we're anticipating is we're going to be... We're looking at something that's called Thin Film. It's very durable, so that we don't have to worry about people breaking it by tossing rocks up on it or whatever, and it's very inexpensive. Now, with the incentives that are available, with the tax credits for your private company, you get thirty percent tax credit unlimited, it's getting very close. Right now, a company has to want to do it for the reasons of the environment and so on, to make it work for them, part of their company image. But it's getting very close. The price of solar has dropped significantly in just the last six months. So we're really getting close to the time when it will be... There will be parity between solar and carbon-based energy sources.
Yeah, Mr. Perrigo, you mentioned streetlights being induction. I... What's induction mean compared to what we have now? And as it relates to, why wouldn't we look at some of the other cutting-edge streetlights that are LED, that have no maintenance, much lower utility cost?
Our street lighting guys have been... Have spent a lot of time looking at all the different technologies. LED is a great technology. My understanding is... I'm not an expert in this, but I think I can give you a pretty good answer. The LED light doesn't spread out as much, so you have to put more of them in, because the light shines more down. Induction lighting is sort of a compromise. Our lights right now are two hundred and fifty watt bulbs. The induction lights, we'll probably be putting in two hundred watt. You could put in one hundred and fifty watt and technically get the same lighting, but it doesn't look the same, so residents are concerned, because it feels darker in the neighborhood. So putting in just a two hundred watt bulb will save tremendous energy. And again, that light lasts seven times longer than the... Pressure... Sodium pressure, or whatever kind of bulb we use. I'm not quite sure which one it is.
But it doesn't change all our lights to yellow glow to them, do they?
Well, the light is going to look and feel different, yes. So we're going to be, you know, working on... We're looking at different strategies for putting those out there. For example, maybe putting them on collector streets, where it won't feel different in your neighborhood where you live until people get used to them. But technically, the light is the same amount of light. In fact, there will be even more light, more candle wa... or however you measure that.
But I think there's a big difference when seniors look at lighting, when it has a yellow glow to it, the processing, the color, it doesn't... It's darker for them at night. And that's one of the things I was concerned, you know? Because I think that's where we might accomplish the same thing by turning all the ones we have down a little bit.
I don't know, Commissioner. I'm not enough of an expert on the streetlights to know the answer to that, but I do know they've spent a lot of time researching it. Henderson's put a lot of time into it, the county. And pretty much universally in the valley, they've decided that induction lighting is the best alternative to save energy, to save maintenance costs, and provide the same quality of lighting that people experience currently.
Very good. Any other comments? Okay, I think we can accept the report, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We can now move to item number thirty, which is DIR thirty-five, zero, thirty-three. It's a progress report by the Planning and Development Department regarding the development of walkable community plans as discussed at the March twenty-third, two thousand and nine Joint City Council and Planning Commission Workshop. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, we wanted to give you an update tonight on our walkable community plans. If I could have the next slide, please. As you'll remember from our joint workshop in March, we talked about both corridor plans and walkable community plans. Last month, I gave you an update on the corridor plans, and tonight, I'll be talking about our walkable community plans. Next slide, please. One of the things that we talked about at the workshop was the program by the American Planning Association relative to great neighborhoods and the qualities of great neighborhoods. Next slide, please. We also talked about why we should care about great neighborhoods, and one of those reasons was because our master plan does direct us to look at neighborhoods, both new neighborhoods and our existing neighborhoods, and making improvements to them. Next slide, please. We also talked about neighborhoods of lasting value. And hopefully, our goal here in the City of Las Vegas is to create neighborhoods that really will be as valuable in the future as they are currently. Next slide, please. We also talked about the qualities that make a neighborhood walkable. And it's a combination of two things. Number one, pedestrian facilities, having sidewalks, shade, and safe pedestrian crossings. Next slide. And then also having amenities to walk to, such as the needs of daily life, grocery stores, drugstores, et cetera. Next slide, please. The question is, what is a walkable community plan? We didn't talk very much about that at the workshop. To give you an idea, a walkable community plan is a specific plan to improve walkability within a defined neighborhood area, also to improve access for residents to their needs of daily life, to reduce traffic by encouraging walking or cycling within the neighborhood for local trips. Also, a walkable community plan will talk about pedestrian cyclist safety, and then identify and encourage the needed amenities or completing the sidewalk network, adding shade trees along the pass, et cetera. Next slide, please. We have identified six study areas to begin with, and they are as follows. The area on Meadows Lane between Valley View and Decatur. Also, the next area, Village Square, which is at the intersection of Sahara and Fort Apache. Another area is along eastern, around the Charleston and Fremont intersection. Another area that we've identified is on Buffalo between Cheyenne and Smoke Ranch. Another area that we've identified is the West Las Vegas area around Owens and Eighth Street. And then the sixth and final area that we've identified for current study includes Rancho between... Right there at the intersection of Craig. The way that we identified those areas, if I could go to the next slide, please, was by taking a map of the city of Las Vegas, looking at where we have commercial areas, and then where we have residential areas in immediate proximity to those commercial areas. And as you can kind of pick out on the map, the red areas indicated there on the map show where we do have great concentration of residential neighborhoods within proximity to commercial areas. And so, looking at existing areas, those offer us the greatest opportunity for increasing walkability in those areas. And so that's the basis for selecting those neighborhoods. Next slide, please. Also, keeping in mind that we are doing corridor plans, we looked at areas that were close to or in close proximity to areas that we'll be studying for our corridor plans, as well as areas that have been identified for transit in the future. Next slide, please. In terms of our schedule, again, we have six areas that we've selected for study. During two thousand and nine, we're looking at the Meadows Lane and the Village Square areas. And then in two thousand and ten, we'll look at two additional areas, and then two thousand and eleven. So we're going to be doing two walkable community plans each year. Once we get done with our first round of walkable community plans, we'll then move forward and identify additional areas for study. Next slide, please. In terms of the composition of the document itself, there will be an introduction talking about the background and history of the community. We'll also go through the existing conditions and the amenities of the area. We'll then do an analysis showing the needed improvements to the sidewalks, crosswalks, et cetera. And then finally, it will contain an action plan, which will talk about implementation, and then also the funding for the plan itself. Next slide, please. In terms of the implementation, what we need to do is go through the process of developing the plan and taking it through the adoption process. After the plan is adopted, then we begin to investigate funding sources, such as scheduling the improvements that are identified for the city's capital improvement program, also looking at federal monies that may be available to us, or any grants that may be available to us for implementation of the plan. And then we get into the nuts and bolts of putting the plan in place through either doing construction by adding new sidewalks to the neighborhood, planting street trees, et cetera, or doing any code modifications that may be necessary. Next slide, please. Again, our purpose in doing that is taking our existing neighborhoods... And if I could have the slide advance. Our plan is to do improvements to the public rights of way, improving the sidewalks, adding shade, adding amenities. And if I could have you advance the slide again. The intention is that private development will then follow, and will enhance and improve our neighborhoods that way. Next slide, please. As I had mentioned, we're doing two walkable community plans this year. One is what we're calling the Meadows Lane area, which is centered around Meadows Lane, just immediately south there of the Meadows Mall, and encompassing basically a half-mile area. And that is one of the first plans that we're working on. Another one that we are working on, if I could go to the next slide, is the Village Square Plan area, which is at the intersection of Sahara Avenue and Fort Apache, where you do have commercial areas right there at the center of that intersection, and then you have residential areas immediately behind there. And so that one also, too, offers some interesting things for us to study in ways that we could improve the walkability of that neighborhood. Next slide, please. In terms of where we are, we've already done some existing condition study as to the facilities that are there in place in the neighborhood. And what we are proposing to do is to have our first public input sessions for both of those neighborhoods. We are tentatively looking at August or the beginning of September for those public input sessions. And so what that will allow us to do is to get input from the residents and the business owners there in those neighborhoods in terms of what are their perceptions about the neighborhood, about walkability, about safety. And so we can get their input on that walkable community plan. Next slide, please. Again, the individuals that we hope to involve in those public input sessions, property owners, business owners, and any neighborhood associations. Next slide, please. In terms of the process, again, we start off with our existing condition study. We hold a public input meeting to get the input of those who are there within the community. And then we actually get into the plan development, trying to address some of the issues that are brought up. And then we propose to have a second public input meeting, so that once we have a draft of the document available, the community residents and business owners can take a look at that and offer their feedback on what we've developed. Then we would make revisions based on that input, and then bring it to the Planning Commission. Now, one of the things that we want to talk to you about at our workshop that is scheduled for July the thirtieth is the Planning Commission input on the walkable community plans and our corridor plans. You know, one of the things that's very important is we have all of you with your background and your expertise, and we don't really give you a whole lot of time to review those plans here in the public forum of a Planning Commission meeting. And so again, one of the things that we'd like to talk to you about is, how can you have the best opportunity to review these plans that we're developing and give your input, so that we make sure that you are a crucial part of that process in developing that plan with us? So again, please be thinking about that as we go forward to our workshop on the thirtieth, is how can we involve you in this, and again, take advantage of your expertise? And then finally, what we hope to do with these plans is forward those to City Council for adoption, and then obviously, begin to implement those plans. Next slide, please. Do I have another one? That's the end of the presentation. So again, that's where we are currently. We are working on two plans. We hope to begin our public input here shortly, and then begin developing those plans and bring them back to you for comment. Thank you very much.
I just have one quick question.
Yes.
How are you going to notify the people of the meetings, the general public, for the walkable community meetings when you meet with them?
We will be sending out postcards to all property owners and business owners within the area that we've identified, and then also any neighborhood associations that are within those boundaries as well, and then work through our standard assembly people as well to...
Thank you.
I have a question briefly. Help me reconcile something. You saw today where we had the applicant come in wanting the vino there. And we had all these homeowners here that oppose it, all right? And as I understand the walkability concept... And I struggled with this before, and I think I actually discussed it briefly, but... If we're going to have walkability, you want these stores like the applicant had there, to some degree, anyway, right? Because... Because the whole concept is, you don't have to get in your car and drive everywhere. If you just need to go get a half a gallon of milk, or pizza, or whatever, you can walk to it, right? I mean, my wife loves the idea. She's not wanting one of those bikes that has the wagon in back, so she can bike to the grocery store and back again, which we live, we very well could. I mean, it's not a problem. But it's so dangerous where we are. I mean, I don't like that idea. I love this concept here, because now, we can make it safer. We can have paths that are safe, that you separate the automobiles from pedestrians and the bikes. But I struggle with the idea of, well, the homeowners don't want these, some of these establishments there. How do we, how do we, how do you reconcile that? What are your thoughts?
If I may, when we did the original workshop, what we talked about is that there's all sorts of different kinds of neighborhoods, and the whole point is, is that you create, you know, those that want to live in a downtown area want a very different living experience than those who choose to live in the outskirts, in a much more rural area. So, what this is, is looking at the existing conditions, as Flynn showed the map with the red areas, if you will. So, we're building upon those areas that have the, Flynn calls it, the good bones, upon which you can build these neighborhoods where they've already started. But not everybody wants to live in the same kind of neighborhood. So, for persons who want to live miles and miles away from stores, then certainly, there will still be many areas of the city where that will be the case. This is the creation of little village centers, if you will, in some of the suburban areas, and more urban centers in the more urban areas. So, the whole idea is having a whole variety of different kinds of neighborhoods throughout the city that meet the needs of all the different types of people that want the different living experiences.
So, then, I think that kind of, if I understand correctly, Commissioner Evans, that somewhat answers the dilemma you were discussing before, because some neighborhoods, they're okay with this, other neighborhoods are not. Is that, am I understanding it correctly?
No, I don't think that was in reference to, I think, what your previous application. No, I think I would agree with Ms. Wheeler that, in terms of the walkability aspect, particularly like in the northwest and in the more rural areas, I think people move out there in large part to get away from the urban aspect. They, you know, the horse properties, that there are many people that are very opposed to sidewalks and streetlights, and if I lived there on a couple of acres, I'm not sure I'd want that either. But then, you end up with a subdivision nearby, and they want that. So, it's, there's this, like a Teutonic plate, there's this conflict. But, for instance, my thought was downtown, you know, all the high-rises, if the jewel were to be fully occupied, and some of those, there are few around the medical center complexes. I think those are great opportunities for being able to walk to work, and to be able to go to the grocery store, and, you know, it's a, but I, my thought was that you always have to have a streetscape in order to have shade, in order to do it. But in some of these destination places, I don't know how you would get around not getting in the car and driving there. So, I don't know whether that answers your question, but during the break, I had a brief discussion with some of the applicants outside on that particular item, and I said, I think where we all mess up, or applicants often miss the boat, is that they don't go out and do a needs assessment from the community they choose to serve. You know, they don't go out and say, what do you guys want to see in this neighborhood? What can you live with? What are your wants? Because in that application, and, you know, it's done, we voted on it, but my thought was if they had started it with a, like a hybrid Trader Joe's-type concept, which sells beer and wine, I don't know about, I think they sell hard liquor as well, but where they sold produce, and they specialize in cheeses and deli items, I would think that would be, have overwhelming support from a neighborhood. And then, if you wanted to morph into, you know, something, but when you come out with a C-store-type application where, you know, liquor is the, is the, in the heading and the major proponent, of course, that's going to find objection from applicants. But I don't know. I mean, I'm, I, you know, we say, I'm not an expert on planning, we just play one on TV, so I'm curious about what our experts have to say.
Public hearing is open. If you'd like to join in here, Mr. Farlow, please feel welcome.
Some of your folks has been around a long time, Commissioner Evans, Margot. If you go back about twenty years.
Pirate, pirate.
I'm sixteen years young.
If you go back about twenty years, if you remember, there was a lady that was pushing a baby in a shopping cart along Eastern, and hit a bump in the thing, and the baby went tumbling out on Eastern, and the baby was killed. My concern about, on that Eastern thing that we're talking about, is to have a, somehow to separate the traffic from pedestrians. I don't know how to do it or anything, but that was a terrible thing, I just keep that in mind.
That's one of the fundamental elements of walkable, yeah.
Flynn, with regards to the walkable communities as this goes forward, both of you, Ms. Perico and yourself, have been very involved in the trail system, the open space, and what we've done in a lot of areas throughout the valley. But, and this isn't a criticism where we're at, but we have so much of the trail system that isn't even close to having a tree planted along it, and we're, I would hope that we're not shifting gears to forget that, because this is the plan du jour, because I spend daily on Meadows Lane. It's a very walkable street inasmuch, but it's on the out, it runs along a regional mall that's got thousands of cars, parking, that is strictly designed as a non-walkable venue. And the only way to fix that is to drag the development community to the bargaining table, or, you know, as a stakeholder, not with a stick, but with a greater environment. Too often, we use codes as a stick to beat up on people, and we wind up getting less for our efforts. I mean, that, to make that walkable, you'd need density, you'd need, they'd need to make their own parking lot walkable, which is not. It's the hottest thing in town to walk from the fortieth stall out, by the time you get to the front door, you're sorry you went there, in one turn. The Springs Preserve, and I'm just throwing this out, because as we go through this process, the Springs Preserve is a wonderful walking community, but it's a gate. To get into it, it's almost, it's almost foreboding to walk into the Springs Preserve. You're directed to drive into it. So, it seems like we need a lot of people at the table to do a wake-up call. The resorts out in, south of Sahara, they do a better job of getting people to walk from the street into their casino, because there's a buck at the end of the road for them. And we have a lot of walkable areas here, but we don't have a way to get people to think, I want out of my car, and I'll take it, because Summerlin's probably an incredible walkable community. When you talk about West Sahara, the Village there, it's a great walkable area. The streets are a mile and a half wide, but it's still, I see people walk there every day. So, I just, hopefully, we can kind of continue some of the initiatives already in place and let them evolve.
If I can just offer two points to that comment. Number one, in terms of existing trails that don't have any trees yet, one of the things that we hope to look at, and specifically with the Meadows Walkable Community Plan, is tying into existing trails. For example, we have the Pioneer Trail that is there at the Springs and continues over to the east to West Las Vegas, and then to our cultural corridor. And so, what we hope to do as part of this plan is look at ways that we can improve those connections to that trail, and then also, the Bonanza Trail. And then, as you've mentioned, the Springs Preserve has wonderful walking areas within, inside of it, that we want to connect to as well, and so, involving them in this process is going to be very important. Secondly, talking about the mall itself, and that's a crucial component of the Meadows community, the owner of the mall, General Growth Properties, has a mall in the Salt Lake City area, where they have pretty much bulldozed it and intend to do a mixed-use community there on the site, the Cottonwood Mall. Unfortunately, they're in bankruptcy right now, but at least, they have the understanding of redeveloping mall sites and making them a mixed-use walkable community. And so, I think the Meadows area with that mall does offer some opportunities for us to work with the developer in terms of looking at ways that we can improve that area and make it more walkable. So, again, excellent comments, and we hope to do that as part of this.
And if I just might add two quick comments. As Flynn said, the Bonanza Trail, east-west from, you know, Summerlin down to the Las Vegas Wash, and then we already have the Downtown to Red Rock Trail on Alta, all that is going to provide access to the Springs Preserve. But in terms of the trees, we absolutely continue to push for trees. The council did adopt the Urban Forestry Initiative, which set a minimum canopy target, and we are just finishing up a study that was completed on trees in the public space. So, in conjunction with the Water Authority, we're putting together all of the data, so that we can begin to manage our forests intelligently and put forward plans to meet those canopy targets. So, we absolutely are continuing to push in that direction.
One final question, if I may, through you, Mr. Chair. The, with the tree scapes, the streetscapes with the tree and the canopy concept, is there an issue with irrigation, and who's going to pay? Because my thought was, as development occurs, can that, can that be brought in while there's other development, or perhaps, when streets are torn up, is that the opportunity for irrigation? I'm concerned that we all think it's a terrific idea, but when, at the end of the day, there's no money, and then, you know, how do we pay for that?
Well, again, there's a number of different ways to do that. In the Downtown Centennial Plan area, one of the things that we do require is that as properties redevelop, the property owner is required to install streetscape as part of that. That is one method for doing it. Obviously, we have our capital improvement, the city's general fund, which we can look at. There's also the opportunity to look at things such as special improvement districts. So, there's a number of ways that that can be done. Obviously, in any case, what we want to use is drought-tolerant trees, so we reduce the water demand there. But again, there are a number of different ways that we can do that, and that's one of the things that we intend to address as part of the implementation section of the documents, is how we go about doing that.
I can add that, if I may, that the mayor is currently in Denver as part of the mayor's Institute of Community Design, and the idea of that is for the mayor's, invited mayors go to a host city, and then meet with design professionals there with regard to an issue of that city and one from their cities. The downtown trail system, which you know has been in effect for some time, and the slight modification that we've made based upon the sustainability initiative is to look at it as a tree trail. Trees have always been an integral part of the trail system downtown, and we were impressed with the information we gave you on March twenty-third, the studies that indicate that the, all persons indicate that the best sidewalk is one with dappled sunlight from trees. We have decided to modify that and look at the trees as planting different types of drought-tolerant trees, and provide, if you will, a palette of the types of trees that would be appropriate here throughout the downtown, and make that part of the trail system, and part of the open space and an education process, so that we can continue to seek grants and other types of monies that are available to assist with these programs. So, as Flynn indicated, the seeking of funding is a crucial part of all of these plans as we move forward, and of course, Mr. Perico's presentation, each one had funding options available with it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I think we accept the report and appreciate your effort. Thank you very much. We now move on to citizens' participation, where public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of time may be limited, and the discussion on any single subject, so please proceed if you'd like to speak.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. If somewhere in my comments, I seem to reflect that I was lowering the bar, Commissioner Ellsworth and Commissioner Evans, that was not my case. I never lowered the bar. But my concern is, and I wish that Chairman, Vice Chairman Truesdale would address this too, I think a train wreck is going to hit this commercial properties. Everything I'm reading, I don't know if you're reading something different, I wish you would tell us, but there's a, there's a, there's a problem, there's a problem coming. And one of the things that I read, and Mr. Finn mentioned, or he hit on this, about a property developer that was, basically, it's one of these big box stores go under. And those will, some of them will never come back, never come back. And what the plan was, the government is going to have another stimulus package coming through. They're going to have to pass it because of the unemployment. So, there's going to be stimulus money on top of that, and Senator Reeve could probably put his hand in the till someplace. But in a way, the idea is to build housing where these big boxes are. They put columns there, and they use the big box for the amenities, the gyms and little barber shops or whatever. And basically, they bring the people to the shopping center, is the concept, and there was going to be government money to bail out the developers, you know, that are stuck with these shopping centers that nobody knows what to do with. But I mean, and I've asked all the commissioners, I mean, does anybody have any idea of what's going to happen this fall if, if the commercial real estate hits the wall, like, like, like I read?
We, as a city, not anywhere else in this valley, but we, as a city of Las Vegas, need to be the most pro-business environment to recruit jobs, people living here, and business, and make it business-friendly, and we're still struggling with that.
Give me three ways of doing it. I mean, do you people ever have a, in your little get-togethers, you know, when you get, do you talk about this? What are we going to do? I've never, nothing, I've never read anything from the Planning Commission, or the city, or anything that mentions how we're going to address this if we get a train wreck this fall.
Todd, I think we've all been just stunned, and we all are trying to figure out what to do the best for not just the people sitting up here, but for every citizen in this state.
Yeah, we're all in it.
You know, we're all in this, Todd, the biggest owners to the smallest owners.
I'm worried.
I know you're worried, but I'm going to promise you one thing, Todd, you'll never go hungry as long as you know me.
I think Commissioner Truesdale hit it on the head. It's got to be business, business, and business-friendly. And I think even, even on a national level with the stuff you just heard from the federal government this week regarding, you know, not coming here and not, you know, that's our industry.
Basically, that's what, on the discussion on that, whatever they were going to build over there, about the liquor, or whatever it was, and basically, what I was trying to get across is that maybe having a yearly review or something when the, when the economy gets churning again, or something, I don't know. I'm at a loss of what to do if these shopping centers all go belly down.
Thank you.
So, I don't know. But in a way, that's where I was. I wasn't, I didn't want to lower the bar.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd. Okay. With that discussion, and no one else wishing to speak during the public input session, we can declare the Planning Commission concluded. Thank you very much. Boy, did I have to bite my tongue.